Everyone would stand and place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But before we move to approve the order of business for today's meeting, Chancellor, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. If the Board of Trustees will note, then first, a good afternoon to everyone. I'd like to pull item T10, T10. It's our ratification of a memorandum of understanding. We're going to engage in some additional staff diligence on that item and expect it to return next month. So we could pull T10. Everything else stands as presented on the public agenda. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve agenda and order of business with the requested amendments?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Ino, your second?
Second.
Vella? Any comments? Roll call.
Student trustee Callahan advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Absent. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno? Absent. Trustee Villa?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
May I have, moving on approval of minutes, may I have a motion and a second to approve the regular board meeting minutes for September 7, 2022, and the special meeting minutes from 2020, May 13th, June, May 13th, June 13th, and June 24th, July, and July 17, 2021, and from 2019, July 1, July 10, and August 21.
So moved.
I'll second.
So moved by trustee Villa, second by trustee Hoffman. Any comments? Dingnan, roll call.
Student trustee Callahan advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Absent. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno? Absent. Trustee Villa?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Reports from employee organizations. Do any members of the resource table wish to be recognized at this time to make comments before, before the board? If so, we have online and in person. So Dr. McKeever, if you can be, you are recognized.
Thank you. First, the first thing I'd like to discuss is the recent racist, anti-indigenous, and homophobic remarks made by the L.A. City Council members, as well as the president or now former president of Los Angeles Federation of Labor. While these were not just anti-black, anti-indigenous, and anti-queer, they were dangerous to our communities. What they do is they sow division within these communities themselves. They do not help us to move forward in the ways that we need to, that are beneficial to all members of this community and other communities as well. And politicians and people who do this need to be held accountable. There's no space for this type of racism, sexism, homophobia in today's world any longer. Right? But there's also a greater responsibility now that's expected of us. A couple of the members who were in those meetings, they weren't saying as much that was anti-black or, you know, anti-indigenous, but they said nothing to object. We're going to be held responsible in the future for objecting to those type of things. We can no longer, if we're in a position of authority, sit in the classroom, sit in a board meeting, sit in the city council, and allow those type of words to be said without noting our objections. We are hoping that what the AFT 1521 can do is work with the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor on a joint resolution that will condemn this and ask for the resignations of all involved. And I know for a lot of people politically, this becomes a very dangerous step. But it's the right step. It's the thing that we should be doing. And we need to be courageous now, not just political. The second thing I'd like to talk to you about is AB 1705. Now that AB 1705 has passed, what now? And I want to thank Angela Chavere, my colleague, and, and a bunch of other faculty who have come before you and told you the dangers of AB 1705. But now this passed, we really need to understand something. We're going to lose students. We're going to lose students who are just like me, who struggled in math. Because now we're forcing these students into college-level math. Right? And now with the three-strikes program where you can't take your class more than three times within the district, those students are just going to drop out. And there's going to, there's going to be a large exodus from our schools because of this. Now, I'm not saying this just as the president of AFT 1521, thinking about the jobs of my faculty. I'm thinking about the community I live in. I live in Silmar. I live in the low-income end of Silmar. I live a mile from where I grew up in Pacoima. This community means a lot to me. To think that these students may no longer have the opportunity that I had, because it took me nine years to get through community college, largely because it took me nine years to get through my math classes. And I, I dropped so many classes, I nicknamed myself James W. McKeever. The W stood for withdrawal. Because I had to withdraw for various reasons. I had to work more hours. I couldn't keep up with the homework. And now a bunch of students who didn't do well in K through 12 are returning students who have not been in math for years are going to be forced into college-level math. What are we going to do to accommodate those students? What are we going to do to make sure those students get through? What are we going to do to help make up for the learning loss of those students? And then the last thing I want to talk to you about is adjunct healthcare. $200 million signed by the governor. Does not mean we're guaranteed adjunct healthcare. Healthcare should be a human right. Healthcare should not just be available to the wealthy. Once again, as a single father in high school, moving out on my own, I had a son who had asthma, and I had no health insurance. So whenever he had a cold or flu or an asthma attack, I had to take him to the emergency room. And at the emergency room, he had to sit for hours with a bunch of other low-income people with no insurance while he was waiting for service. This should not happen. But I'm going to ask you, who are we if we allow it to happen to our employees? Who are we if we don't do something to help our employees? We cannot take the high ground on this, on this issue if we can do something to help. This is not something that's a contract negotiation. This is just the right thing to do. And if you don't do the right thing on this, if we don't do the right thing on this, we should all be held accountable to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, President Dr. McKeever. Is the representative of 1521A? SEIU Local 99? Chris, are you?
Yes. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Chris San Jose, I represent SEIU Local 99. Today, I want to take the time to thank the board for acknowledging National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day on today's agenda. As you may already know, our membership is comprised of mostly custodial staff. I'm also a custodian, and speaking on behalf of many of the custodial staff, we often don't get the recognition and support we deserve. Custodial work is a thankless job. It's hard work, and it's not for everyone. We are essential workers, and as a custodian, we deal with so much negativity behind the scenes, such as dealing with work environment that's hostile, not making a pay that we should be making as inflation arises, not having enough custodial staff in that many of the campuses, why campuses continue to expand, are not having the tools and supplies needed to make our jobs easier. When COVID hit, who was on campus? The custodians. With all that being said, our custodians continues to do what they can to show their dedication in servicing the students, faculty, and staff. Custodians play a vital role to this organization. In fact, custodians play many roles. Not only are custodians the front line of defense when it comes to keeping our buildings germ-free and clean, custodians are considered, are also considered as ambassadors for this organization. For example, when students are walking around campus lost and need assistance, who are the first ones they usually see? It's a custodian. The custodians play a vital role in making sure students are directed to the right location or someone who can better assist them with their needs. Sometimes students can be overwhelmed with the classes or a class is too difficult, or they're just dealing with life in general. Where there was one situation where a student was at their breaking point, for whatever reason, and felt they could not complete their classes. It was a custodian that comforted and encouraged the student to continue with finishing their course instead of dropping out, and the student actually took the custodian's advice. Because some campuses have high schools on-site, custodians sometimes have to be babysitters in a sense of making sure our high school students are not in areas they're not supposed to be. When equipment or buildings are not functioning properly, for example, maybe the AC is not working properly, and it's 100 degrees outside, or the elevators are not working properly, and the custodian is working on the fifth floor, guess what? Someone still have to service those areas and remove the trash. We have some campuses that have a huge homeless population, which many of them have mental issues. The custodians are sometimes the ones who encounter them first, which, you know, put their safety at risk. So I just wanted to share this with you and enlighten you on what our position as custodians at LACC, LACC D is truly all about. At the end of the day, it's all about servicing our students, making sure their needs are met, and that they're learning in a conducive working, learning environment. And that, and that can only happen if we all work together. And I would also like to take the time to thank all the presidents, administrators, management, and supervision that's doing their part in making sure our custodians are working in a hostile-free, safe, positive, and healthy work environment. And, you know, it's a pleasure and honor to have this recognition on the agenda. And I hope our campus leaders at the campuses are doing something positive to acknowledge the custodial staff for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do want to recognize that trustee Moreno has joined the, the, the meeting. Welcome, trustee Moreno. Just want to make sure that you're there, trustee Moreno.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Ms. Harrington from Teamsters 911?
Good afternoon, President Bueno. Members of the Board and Chancellor Rodriguez. For the record, I am Deborah Harrington, acting president of the Teamsters, representing our district deans. I want to recognize, appreciate, and echo the board resolutions put forth forward today that honor members of the LGBTQIA+ and Filipino communities, as well as our undocumented students and custodial workers. While this week has surfaced a lot of anger, disappointment, and disillusionment with several leaders in this city, our LACC D leadership has demonstrated their commitment to stand for inclusion, representation, respect, and stand against hatred, racism, and homophobia. On a personal note, I want to recognize in particular the importance of LGBTQIA+ History Month and yesterday's National Coming Out Day. I served as a moderator for the student panel, which opened last week's Strengthening Student Success Conference. One of our own students from L.A. City College movingly shared with the audience how important it was that the higher education community honors LGBTQIA+ visibility and how much validation and belonging they derive from the care and support of the LGBTQ+ Center, as well as EMOJA at City. This attention to intersectionality is vital to our students' well-being and success. And it is also vital to the staff, faculty, and administrators across this district. While, while I did not come out until I was in my 30s, and while I know for some of the members of my unit, this still may be a difficult or impossible thing to do, please note that as stated in our board resolution, and as part of the theme of the Human Rights Campaign, we are born to shine and to live freely and authentically. On behalf of Teamsters, I affirm our commitment to supporting our district's framework for racial and social justice. And I strongly encourage the board to be at the ready to push against attempts by local or national entities to roll back the progress we've made in securing greater rights and freedoms for the LGBTQ+ community and other minoritized communities, including attempts that strike at the heart of reproductive rights and the health of women. Our students in this city are watching. We need to stand up and stand for the democratizing values that are at the heart of and form the promise of higher education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional from Labor? Angela Chavetti from the District Academic Senate. Dr. Chavetti?
Good afternoon, and thank you, President Bueno. First of all, for the record, I'm Angela Chavere, president of the District Academic Senate. After the shocking and painful revelations of the last few days, it's difficult for Angelenos not to become cynical about the motives of the public servants and political leaders who profess to represent the people they serve. As always, there are informed lessons one can take away from this debacle. And a major one is the need for the public to remain vigilant about the corruption, identity politics, and self-serving deals that seem to be pervasive in the current political establishment. I want to applaud and support the board's statement of solidarity in response to this crisis. And let you know that the District Academic Senate will meet tomorrow and vote on a resolution to support the district's response. Unfortunately, it is likely that instead of being an isolated incident, these problems are more pervasive than we might like to think. I want to invite all of us to take a good look in the mirror, do some soul-searching, and remember that not too long ago, the LACC D was harshly criticized for disenfranchising Black members of the community. It is time for us, for all of us, to truly embrace the diversity of our community, reject identity politics, and serve all students and constituents to the best of our abilities. On the academic front, it is becoming increasingly clear to educators across the country that COVID-19 learning loss is real. It is huge, and it's going to impact the K through 12 system, colleges, and their students for many years to come. Study after study has shown alarming declines in math and reading scores, chronic absenteeism, and lack of participation among students in the K through 12 system since the pandemic started in 2020. Additionally, the number of students dealing with long COVID, multiple hardships, and mental health challenges are at unprecedented levels. Now that AB 1705 have been signed into law, the mission of the California Community Colleges and their ability to serve all students, especially those whose educations have been negatively impacted by the pandemic, have been reduced significantly. Legislative intrusion into curriculum is never a good idea. While other states are busy banning books for education on critical race theory or sexual orientation, it is unfortunate that in a blue state like California, wealthy corporate interests are driving the educational discourse in such a way that they have succeeded in using legislation during a pandemic to essentially ban remedial education and eliminate access to pre-transfer-level math and English. This ban has been carried out in the name of student success using flawed and incomplete metrics, such as one-year throughput rate, while glossing over equity gaps, enrollment declines, and lower course success rates. Private institutions and student loan companies stand to benefit from this unfortunate turn of events, while thousands of students will be disenfranchised, primarily students of color, those living in poverty, and English learners, the very students we claim to champion. In the meantime, college enrollment and student success will continue to suffer as we are not able to fully serve the needs of our communities. I want to thank the board members who supported faculty in their opposition to AB 1705, while pledging our commitment to continue to serve students to the best of our abilities under the current legal constraints. As you know, the current budget has $53 million to address COVID learning loss, and it is absolutely essential to include faculty in these discussions. Again, what this process has taught faculty is an important lesson about the need to remain vigilant and proactive to fight against harmful legislative intrusions into the classroom. Finally, on the proposed West LA development in Culver City, where a 67-year lease of 13 acres of land, I just want to say a couple of things. If done right, this agreement can help stabilize the district's finances by providing significant additional income. However, if not done right, we will squander a priceless opportunity. I urge the board to exercise the utmost transparency during the process and to not sell the future students of this district short. Is this impact, this will impact our students for generations to come, long after all of us are gone. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You, we received the Chancellor's monthly report, which includes activities at the colleges from the college presidents. Do any of the presidents wish to further comment or highlight anything not included in, in, in the written report? I just want to make sure that this is voluntary. It's not mandatory. Are there any presidents? Oh, we're, oh, Jim. It's the hat.
Well, good afternoon. It's nice to see you all.
Wonderful hat, though.
Oh, there's a reason for that. We'll talk about it later. One word, dermatologist. Okay. I thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak with you and to see you in person. Just to emphasize the fact that West hosted a wonderful career in college fair for over 1,000 Black and Latino students at West. It went so well that we've agreed that we'll make it an annual affair, so we're very proud of that. And also, I'd like to introduce you officially to two individuals on my leadership team that came during the pandemic, and this will be, for many of you, the first time you have seen them for real, as real people. It's Dr. Brian Stokes, our vice president for administrative services. Brian? And Dr. Jeffrey Archibald, our vice president for academic affairs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other president? Justice Bueno? Dr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Board President Bueno. Good afternoon, Board members and Chancellor Rodriguez. I'm happy to update you on a couple of things here at L.A. City College. We welcomed about 150 students from Sotomayor High School of Arts and Science Magnet this afternoon to tour our facility and learn about what we're doing at L.A. City College. It's the first time that they've visited the college, and I was very excited to meet with them and have an opportunity for them to see our programs. Wanted to also let you know that we've added almost two dozen of our non-credit offsites back on with us. So we had lost them all during the pandemic, and we had started to recover that I reported last month, but we've, we've ended up being able to bring about two dozen back since then. So we're really excited about that. I think part of that is, is we've offered more programs in vocational allied help through our non-credit program. They seem to be extremely popular. We've got another one that we just launched again this week, so this is really good for us. Also, I'm really excited that we brought on a new dean of allied help that can build out not just the non-credit programs, but make sure there's a pathway from non-credit to our credit programs and beyond. So that's going to help us tremendously as well. We are increasing our course offerings for our late start, so that should help to continue to improve our enrollment numbers. And finally, I just wanted to update you on some of the events that we've had in the last couple of weeks that have been great. We had a cultura event that celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month, and we had several hundred student faculty and staff on campus for music, food, cultural artifacts that we had for a couple of hours out, and thought it was a lot of fun. We celebrated Coming Out Day yesterday with a lot of festivities on the campus. We had a screening of Man Killer on Monday, which is the document of Wilma Mankiller, who was voted, the only woman voted in by the Cherokee Nation as the chief. So that was a great opportunity for us. And we will be celebrating Dia de los Muertos. We're going to have on our Theater Portico an altar that people can bring in their remembrances of their family members who've moved on and loved ones. So we're really excited. And lastly, we had an event, a meet-and-greet for our EMOJA program, and we had over 100 students plus faculty and staff who were there at the meet-and-greet. It was wildly successful for us. And we had a meet-the-pros networking opportunity for our students, where we had professionals connected with students in those programs that they could spend an evening with, have dinner, and really get to know what the possibilities were for them in their future work. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Dr. Grivens, but I also want to recognize trustee Henderson, who is with us via, I was going to say, or connect, via Zoom. Dr. Grivens?
Yes, thank you so much. Good afternoon. Three updates that I'd like to provide. Two really important ones, especially in relationship to what's happening in the media in Los Angeles. The first one is on Monday, we held our land acknowledgement ceremony, where we unveiled our land acknowledgement plaque. That was an absolutely amazing ceremony that we did in partnership with the Fernando Daniel Totapian Band of Mission Indians, and we really appreciate their partnership. The second one, yesterday, on National Coming Out Day, we, for the first time at Valley, raised the Pride Plus flag, and that was an absolutely amazing experience. It connects with a lot of our efforts. Soon, we're going to be opening a Rainbow Pride Center in a matter of weeks in the new expanded space that's, can also include the Dream Resource Center, and that's adjacent to our EMOJA and Black Scholars Program, which also is doubling their space. So it's a lot of great things that are happening there. But yesterday was a really, really big event. That, the, the flag is incidentally right outside my office window, so it was wonderful to be able to see that all day. And then lastly, this morning, we were out at all of our local high schools, helping all of the high school seniors get going on their FAFSA with my partner, President Ornellus. We've been going out, we are starting to go out to all the high schools. This is a huge difference from years past, and this isn't connecting with a couple of dozen students. This is quite literally every high school senior. So it was nice. I personally went to Grant this morning and then Panorama, and it was absolutely wonderful to actually see hundreds of high school seniors in person and to be able to talk to them about their plans. We can, we're going to continue these efforts throughout the whole year, so we're starting off with the FAFSA, and then again with our partnering with Mission College and President Ornellus, going out and helping with CCC Apply and then enrolling students onsite. Thank you. Thank you for letting me share that.
Very much. Dr. Aguilar?
Good afternoon, President Bueno, trustees, and Chancellor Rodriguez. We're very excited here at Piers. We were just formed a week ago that we have received $3 million, Title V HSI grant. The focus of the grant is towards our dual enrollment activities at the high schools, continuing to support our multicultural centers, and really develop an extensive program, similar to an adelante program for Latino students. So we're really excited about that opportunity. And very similar to my colleagues, we at Piers have also had a couple of events here for our high schools. One this past Saturday, we had over 300 students participating, registering FAFSA support, workshops for parents, so very engaged. And more importantly, I also want to make sure that all of you are aware of our 20th, October 20th event here at Piers. We are going to be celebrating our 75th year, opening up our automotive building. And so it'll be an exciting, many community members will be participating, and we're looking forward to a wonderful event. So please make every effort to try and join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Some of us will be there. President Dorado?
Thank you, President Bueno. Thank you for allowing me to address the board. I want to invite you guys next week on 10/20. We're going to be hosting a Unity event in light of all the, that's going on, so that we could start the healing within our communities, because we need to stand together in solidarity. So please join us 10/20. Also want to give you guys an update on our early decision activities. We're out at the high schools doing FAFSA info sessions and we're, and connecting with all senior class, with all seniors during classroom presentations. As you, as everybody knows, today's, they're doing their PSAT, so perfect opportunity for us to, to do that. Also, on October 29, open invitation to join us for the Reggie Run for Education. If you're open to putting on some tennis shoes and running and get healthy with us, please join us. All proceeds will go to scholarships. And speaking of scholarships, our scholarship reception is scheduled for Friday, October 24, 21st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Please join us as we give out $70,000 in scholarships to 170 From four to uh, six PM. Please join us as we give out seventy thousand dollars in scholarships to a hundred and seventeen students. We moved it from the spring so it can make a difference for the students. So in the past, we would always give it out in the spring. But we're not going to forget our spring students because we're also going to give our scholarships next in the spring. So we're doing it twice a year. Fall and spring, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Dr. Culpepper.
Thank you, President Buena. Uh, I just want to start by thanking uh, the Chancellor, Chancellor Rodriguez for the warm official welcome Uh, to Southwest College, uh, putting together the program. It was outstanding, uh, very well attended. Certainly want to recognize uh, the trustees who sent me well wishes, uh, all of the trustees, especially those who attended. Uh, trustee Henderson and trustee Eno, uh, truly appreciate your support uh, in coming. Uh, also want to recognize my fellow uh, college presidents, uh, Jim Limbaugh and also uh, Kathleen Burke who came out and uh, supported as well. Uh, and all the uh, uh, my colleagues, uh, presidents who sent uh, warm wishes and really appreciate that. It was very encouraging. Also want to recognize uh, that the, the community came out to support uh, the, the event as well. We had a very Uh, strong representation, LASC Foundation as well as the LASC Coalition. Uh, and certainly without the faculty and staff and the administrators who were there, uh, our strong quality Uh, colleagues who are here serving at Southwest College came out uh, in full force, showing that Cougar pride. And so we truly appreciate everyone uh, who showed up. Uh, let me transition into uh, a milestone that I'll call a milestone. Uh, the first one hundred days have passed. Uh, and I am pleased to report that the state of the college is strong. Uh, we are continuing to work on our enrollment. Uh, as you probably have seen, uh, the enrollment is up ten percent. And uh, over last fall and we're continuing to uh, keep that uh, energy going. Uh, the past administration has set a strong foundation for us to build on and we're continuing to build on that foundation as we move forward. Uh, we coined three pillars. We're looking at reintroducing, re-engaging and rediscovering. Uh, we are reintroducing Southwest to its community and the community is responding. Uh, we have been visiting and uh, calling every uh, K through twelve and middle school uh, in, in our area and our service footprint. Uh, to encourage them to rebuild the partnerships that we've had in the past. Uh, and to uh, help us build new partnerships uh, as we move forward. Uh, we're certainly uh, thankful for their response because we can see that through the, through the enrollment growth. Uh, that they are re-engaging uh, the college, especially in two key areas. And I am pleased to say that in the black and brown area of our demographics, they're returning uh, to school. They're returning to Southwest. And we're really pleased uh, with that. Uh, we hosted a principal breakfast. Uh, it was well attended. A lot of good information was exchanged and we look forward to continuing to build on that foundation that was planned in the past. Uh, as we continue to build on it toward the future. We are uh, putting together a business community breakfast, inviting our business partners uh, to build relationships with them as we move forward. Uh, we had a wonderful higher LAX program uh, to celebrate those who had graduated from the program. Uh, it is still thriving and we are looking at uh, how we can expand it. Uh, I also want to note that we had in accreditation, uh, meet and greet and a forum. It uh, was very, very positive. Uh, we heard that from the accreditation committee. Uh, we know that that is maybe second base. We look forward to March as we continue to go toward the third and round for home, uh, if you will, if I can use the baseball metaphors. Uh, I also want to make known that um, the uh, promise that was made Uh, and the commitment that was made by Congresswoman Maxine Waters uh, last year of the one point five million dollars uh, to open up the family center. Uh, we have now received it. And so we are using those resources uh, to build out the family centers as well as Uh, the Men of Color Center as well. Thank you for sharing that. Uh, let me sharing that, share that with you and thank you once again. Uh, Chancellor Rodriguez for the official welcome to Southwest College.
Thank you very much. Dr. Arnellus.
Hi, good afternoon, trustee Buena, members of the board, Chancellor Rodriguez. Want to say hello from somewhere where it's literally hailing as we speak. And so I want to start off uh, similar themes as my colleagues, but lots going on here at, at the college. Um, this morning, our outreach team literally had the opportunity to, to visit several of our local high schools. Um, serving almost six hundred students this morning. Um, so getting them ready for FAFSA and CCC Apply. Also want to share with you that we have um, partnered with PUC, which is Partnerships to Uplift Communities. It's a consortium of charter schools here in the Northeast San Fernando Valley. Where while we are solidifying our relationship with LA Unified. Um, our charter schools have asked for the same red carpet service with senior outreach activities throughout the year, dual enrollment, adult ed. So uh, working on, on the partnership with PUC as well. Um, this Monday, we held, we hosted a successful transfer fair with over forty colleges and universities and our students were Present and it was a, a great activity to finally have um, in person after the, the pandemic. Um, and this Friday, we're hosting over sixty industries on campus. We have Industry Day. Um, with several industry partners and we're honored to have Congressman Cardenas kick us off with the welcome. Um, and welcoming again the, the local industries in the area. Um, and that will actually begin many discussions on student internships and partnerships with faculty and advisory committees. So we're really excited about um, our industry this Friday. And then finally, next week, um, we are hosting a series of enrollment events to get us started for Our second session, uh, our short-term courses. We have a robust second session. Um, so while enrollment numbers are still coming in, we're looking forward to an additional boost in the second session. Um, and um, and we're also hosting undocumented student action week next week with community resource fairs. Uh, and community partners visiting the college. So that's, ends my report this morning for this afternoon. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Dr. Burke, and before your report, I just want to acknowledge that you had barbecue week Uh, two weeks ago and a cookie contest at Trade Tech. Uh, Dr. Burke.
Thank you, President Buena. So I won't bring those two items up again. Uh, but I'd like to talk about the fact that the college had uh, launched a laptop loner program for our students. Uh, this fall, students were able to check out laptops to keep for the entire semester. Uh, a Dell laptop. So we were pleased that within the first two weeks, we distributed four hundred laptops for the use uh, for our students' use. Uh, we've been very busy with activities on campus and I'm sure that Chancellor Rodriguez will cover The um, press conference and education that we did around Measure LA last week. Uh, we were joined by Assembly Member Miguel Santiago, by Board President Buena. Uh, the Chancellor and our own faculty and students who commented on the impact that the bonds have had on our campus. Uh, today, we hosted a construction trades job fair, which was really countywide. It was sponsored by uh, Supervisor Hilda Solis, Who was here with us this morning. Uh, and it was a great opportunity, not only for the county and for Jobs in the county, but for our very own construction, maintenance and utility students to come out and meet with employers. And have an opportunity to interact with them and see what they're looking forward to in the, in the future with their own careers. Uh, tomorrow, we are sponsoring the Third Annual Welcome Black Student Kickoff. So just a reminder for you to attend if you're available. That will be from two to four PM. And then on Friday, we are pleased to be hosting the Eighth Annual Disability Summit From eight to three. So we look forward to seeing you at any of those events. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Burke, Dr. Roman.
Thank you so much. Uh, good afternoon, President Buena, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Rodriguez. Uh, pleasure to be with you today. Uh, I'll, I'll report on a couple of things. First is again, as our sister colleges, we are continuing uh, to focus a lot of attention on enrollment. Uh, particularly our short-term classes, the eight-week courses that will be starting on October twenty fourth. We have about three hundred and twenty courses are slated to start on October twenty fourth. They're feeling very well. And we anticipate approximately eight thousand uh, enrollments to come out of the short-term classes. We are making uh, classroom presentations as others are. Part of it is really to ensure that our students are staying on top of their enrollment. They're getting the appropriate support they need For the subsequent terms and really ensuring that they're, they're enrolled. We've done approximately a hundred classroom presentations Uh, thus far in the last two weeks. We're also continuing to call students that we've been doing for the last two years with the fifty cost challenge, the telethons. We held two of those this week and we're continuing uh, with the registration events. In fact, we have one today. Started at nine, going to twelve, and then we're going to do an after, afternoon uh, session. We'll be at South Gate next week, again, doing registration events. The goal is again, to get students to register on the spot. Also, we had a ASU Club Rush Day last week. About forty clubs have now actually chartered. Uh, and this is actually a significant uh, increase uh, from prior years. Our goal is eighty. Uh, that's what, where we were at the top. So we're halfway there and continuing to work very closely with our ASU to ensure that we bring back that Uh, student activity. It's so important to building that community for our students. Uh, we also had a successful transfer day with about forty colleges and universities on campus. We had hundreds of students uh, take part in that. As well as last Saturday, we hosted a job fair. Uh, this was actually hosted by Assembly Member Carrillo and Fong here on campus. We had about eighty employers onsite. We had tables for ELEC as well, where we were registering uh, students on the spot. Yesterday, uh, we hosted a series of activities uh, for coming out day, including the raising of the pride flag and solidarity of our LGBT community. I do want to thank uh, Vice President Vela for being there to, for some of the activities as well as Chancellor Rodriguez. Thank you so much Uh, for joining us to be part of these activities. Lastly, as is the case for some of our sister colleges, we were named uh, twenty twenty-two Champion of Higher Education and also twenty-two, twenty-two Equity Champion Of Higher Education. Uh, this is in part for the total associate degrees for transfer uh, that were awarded um, By ELEC in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. So with that, thank you so much. I appreciate uh, the opportunity.
Thank you, President Roman. Um, that concludes that. We'll move on to public comment. Lupe, are there any items on matters on the regular agenda?
No, sir. No wonder she signed up.
Alright, just want to acknowledge we have items on not matters not on the agenda and that'll be at the end of the meeting. No public comment on matters on the agenda. Moving on, reports from the board. Um, trustee Vela, please summarize the proceedings for the Legislative uh, Legislative and Public Affairs Committee that occurred on September twenty-first.
Uh, thank you, President Buena. Um, so lots happening. Obviously, it was really Um, you know, going over a culmination of a very active legislative session, both in um, Our federal and, and state governments, obviously also locally, but um, Of note, um, we had our federal update from Holland and I, our state policy updates as well as our local advocacy Updates. Um, We had um, on the federal advocacy side, we had about seven grants for LACC D colleges with a total funding Of six point three million dollars last year, which is pretty significant. Um, and then another five grants for LACC D colleges. Um, that are pending right now through the legislative effort, uh, totaling another seven point one million. And a lot of you saw some of those um, on television, including at Mission College and also at the South Gate, uh, East LA Campus. Um, statewide, uh, we sponsored six state legislative bills. Uh, four bills passed the legislature, legislature, three were signed by the governor, um, which is again, um, Pretty good success rate. Um, we did uh, have eight budget priorities that were adopted in the twenty twenty-two budget Of for LACC D. So our total advocacy resulted in over fifty-five million dollars statewide To increase community college access to our service area. And then um, in total, eighteen million dollars were advocated from the state directly to LACC D colleges. As you saw on the local advocacy front, we were able to work with Metro and the mayor Um, and other folks uh, to implement the student pass. Um, and then one thing that, you know, was a little different, but I think it's turning out really well. Is we also had our advocates go into our cities that we serve, uh, in particular to Introduce our college presidents. And I want to thank all the college presidents for um, Being part of that and, you know, thanking also our legislative public affairs, um, staff, Maria Velos and And folks. Um, so lots of uh, I, I would literally be here all day if I talked about all the media coverage we got Last year and this year, but it was a lot of media coverage and I think you guys saw a lot of the reports. So I'll skip that. Alright, that's it for the public affairs.
I will give you a break in between.
Yeah, well, I was, I, yeah.
Trustee Callahan, could you please summarize the proceedings of the Student Affairs Committee that occurred on September ninth?
Yeah, so it was um, I guess a regular um, normal committee or As normal as it can be. Um, it was brought to my attention prior to the meeting that there was um, recently. Obviously, we did have the sheriff's contract that was um, passed um, right as soon as I became trustee closer to June, July-ish. And as we are going through the process of implementing it, um, there were some aspects of the language in the contract that were Um, kind of, they're still working on, but um, I had to sit down with some of our representatives from the um, Sheriff's Department. And there were things that we could work on or that we can um, adjust in terms of Getting training and different things looked at as part of the contract. So I brought the attention of the SAC Committee and we had a cou, we had sent a couple of recommendations out to their student boards For how they could bring more awareness of um, how to keep campuses safer and how to change the language or how to How we're going to be working with some of that changed language. And going forward, I'll be doing a lot more work with our sheriff's department to see how We'll be doing those changes. Cause there were a lot of things that I saw that we do actually work on and I think there's a lot of space for that. Um, aside from that, the boards are doing really well, I'm pretty sure. Um, the majority of them are pretty, they're pretty packed. There's a lot of activity in um, in the ASOGU Uh, than the prior year, which is actually really great. And um, yeah, I'm just looking forward to seeing how the rest of the semester goes.
Um, thank you very much, student, student trustee. Um, I was also at the, at the meeting this past, uh, at this past um, meeting. Um, can I have a volunteer from, or do you already have a student, a trustee who's going to attend the next meeting?
No, I do not.
Uh, it's this Friday?
This Friday.
It's Friday. Uh, do we have volunteer?
I, I jumped in afterwards. Um, I'll do my best to jump in again. After you left is
Oh, okay.
And thank you to the volunteer before showing up.
Yeah, okay. Um, is there another trustee that would, that would like to confirm just in case it doesn't happen? Trustee Eno, you, you seem like you're volunteering.
What time is the meeting again?
Um, it is nine thirty, I believe. I had to check on the board docs, nine thirty.
They're very accommodating in terms of Nine thirty and ten o'clock. If you could send the links to trustee Vedas and trustee Eno, um, then I'm sure that they will. Thank you very much for the, trustee Vela, back to you with regard to the Facilities Master Planning and Oversight Committee on September twenty-first.
Okay. Thank you, President Buena. Um, at the request of um, committee member and trustee, um, Andrew Hoffman. Uh, we had a report on our basic amenities um, throughout the district. Um, really looking at the way um, our buildings were equipped Uh, in order for um, our single mothers and mothers to be able to um, Their, you know, breastfeed or take care of their children adequately. Um, and then also um, We talked about um, access to clean water and um, in hopes that that would um, Be part of uh, our upcoming uh, projects in the facility program. So I want to thank her for bringing that up. Um, we also went ahead and discussed the pro, college project leadership teams uh, that were selected and I think that was also Uh, received well. We also had our Build LACC D semi-annual report. Um, so this report is essentially looking at the build program and its expenditures. Um, So of no, obviously, as we know, um, we have a total of nine point six billion dollars between all measures. Um, six point one of it has been expended and then um, one point seven of it is currently a committee Uh, committed. And then we have about one billion that is still unallocated. So that means that we're doing our job in ensuring that the money is there. So that means that we're doing our job in ensuring that the money is there. We also looked at the local small emerging disabled veterans programs and their participation, so we exceeded our participation with over fifty-one percent of the companies that work at the build program are part of the LSEDB or SLED program, so I want to thank again our build staff. That's a very good accomplishment. Thank you. And that's to be, you know, celebrated by all of you, the board and the chancellor and, and our CFE, Dr. Smith and his folks really continue to adhere to that. And as you know, there's been an unprecedented outreach into the community about our building program and participation at many, many events, so I'm really happy to report that. I mean, the list goes on and on. We've had bootcamps, we've had industry days, we've had meet the primes, we've partnered with Build Dow. I mean, the list goes on and on, so I just wanted to thank again all the folks there. And then going back to the agenda item, we are implementing a new kind of review of the active construction project, so usually it's a receive and file. But what we're doing now in order for the public and members of the committee is to highlight some of the more important construction projects that are going on currently, so I want to thank again staff for doing that, and we're also going to put together an active design project list, which means those projects that are currently in design. So what that would mean is we would have a little bit more information about some of those projects that are currently being designed and then, you know, future would be constructed. So, and, yeah. That's it.
That was a lot.
I'm trying to really like not go.
Trustee Henderson, are you able to, to give a report? Okay. Trustee Eno? Would you give a report on the Chancellor's Advisory Committee on Asian Pacific Islander Affairs chaired on September twenty-second?
Yes, I made it on to the reporting phase now. So, yes, I was able to chair the first API Advisory Committee meeting with, to the chancellor. Thank you to Officer Velos for helping me coordinate all of that. It was really great. Being new to the district, trying to understand how we can collaborate with our community and our employees and see what the need is was a really good starter conversation. So we had a legislative report to see what things are going on as far as that goes. We had really great student experiences that was really heartwarming. One of them was a current student and one of them had transferred to USC and then graduated and is really looking and was able to really explain how they benefited from coming to LACC. So that was really great also. And then we had a report based off of the programs that we have within our colleges, and hopefully we can expand some of those programmings for our students and things like that. Let's see, and that was pretty much it. I mean, the next steps was really to identify what we can do as a group, where the needs are, where the concerns are, and then how to address those for our campus community. And so, you know, looking into potentially graduation or oh, yeah, that's right. And then, sorry, there was a legislative report from Ted Lee's office, so it was a really nice understanding of where his background is and his goals and with the community college to work with us as well. And so that, that was a really good report also. But yes, and then really, hopefully in the future, we'll identify the needs of our district for our students and our employees and our community and do hopefully some fun things as well, cultural events, things, celebrations and things like that. So it's a starter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Henderson will, we're going to table her report until she is present, so we're not going to finish that part. We're going to come back to it. And we're going to finish our report again with trustee Vela on the Chancellor's Advisory Committee on LGBTQIA+ Affairs that you chaired on September thirteenth.
Thank you, President Buena. Briefly, we went ahead and invited guest speaker Emily Turner from the LA County Public Health regarding monkeypox health emergency, and I thought it was very timely. We were able to discuss its inception in the LGBTQ plus community. And currently, I'm, you know, happy to say that that really resonated with our students and you know, the numbers of infection have gone down dramatically and the access to vaccines were given to our students. So I thought that was really amazing, and to be honest with you, that could have gone like the opposite way, where students wouldn't have been able to have access to the vaccine. So we're really happy that they were able to not only report on it, able to show up into campuses and provide the vaccine. We also spoke about LA Valley Colleges' new Rainbow Pride Center, and I think President Gribbins just highlighted that. And, you know, we also opened the Pride Center, the Husky Pride Center at ELAC yesterday, which was really cool. And so I'm really, can't wait to see the other colleges open their pride centers and, or, you know, increase their capacity. We also discussed, speaking of the pride centers, the mini grants that are going to be provided towards our colleges and competitive process, that would be the district looking at those proposals, and those are meant to also assist in some of these programs. And then also that was the money that we advocated and sponsored through the legislative budget process in twenty twenty-one. We also discussed the LGBTQIA ball proposal, which is, the ball proposal would most likely be performed in in, in May, in, in the LGBT, in the lavender graduation. And for those of you that don't know, it's a very popular underground culture, you know, kind of, I would say dancing and pride of the LGBT African-American community and transgender community. So we're excited that we're looking at that. We're working with Greg Wilson, who's part of the LA ball scene. And then we also had our faculty liaison report. And then we discussed the Supreme Court decisions, Arro versus Wade, in particular, how it would affect the Supreme Court looking at also nullifying gay marriage. And then also just as we heard, just tons and tons of stuff from National Coming Out Day yesterday and LGBT Pride Month and Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I've been out there, kind of, you know, making sure that the trustees are represented, and I thank you guys for entrusting in me also to support all of these programs. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Vela. Moving on, item two.
Just to Bona, or Chair Bona, can I say something really quickly? Thank you. Thank you, colleagues, for those really wonderful reports. I'm very proud to be on a board that is so committed to these issues. And trustee Vela, you just elevated us to a whole other level, so thank you. I just wanted to say that we did not have a budget committee meeting this past month, but next week we are having a budget committee meeting dedicated to what we've been talking about, which is an overview and training and educating on the state budget and on our budget. Student trustee Callahan, I know you were asking about that. I hope you can attend the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and I hope anybody else who would like to learn more about our budget allocation process and the model that we follow and how our funds are, you know, distributed and allocated, please come to that meeting. I know that our staff was brought in and Ms. Leter have worked really hard on presenting or preparing a really comprehensive, wonderful presentation, so please join us. Thank you.
I do have a question. The date for that, can you provide the date for that again?
It's Wednesday, next Wednesday, October nineteenth during the regular committee meeting, and it is at two thirty. Is that when budget is, Chancellor?
Yes, it goes to two thirty PM next Wednesday, October nineteen.
If you can put it under calendar, that would be really great. That's why I wanted to mention it here. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Hoffman. That's extremely important for capacity building, and also since these are via Zoom as an, as a public education component for the entire district and the public at large to understand our processes. So thank you very much. May I have, with regard to board travel authorization, may I have a motion and a second on item E two? So moved by trustee Eno?
Yes.
Second.
Second by trust, student trustee Callahan. Any comments? Being none, roll call.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Absent. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to resolutions, and, you know, in the past, I've been asked if we're going to do one vote for all of them, and the answer is no. Each one of these is extremely important, and we're going to take a vote and allow for trustees to comment on each resolution as they are significant to all of our community. So we're going to start again with, with item F one. May I have a motion and a second on item F one, which is LGBTQIA+ History Month and National Coming Out Month. May I have a?
So moved.
A move by trustee Vela. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by, there is a delay, so I think.
I'm sorry, Andrew Hoffman, trustee Hoffman, second.
Trustee Hoffman, second. There's a, there's a delay, a little delay, trustee Hoffman, so that's why you've got the second. Are there any comments?
President Buena? As you saw, we had a very robust, you know, report on the committee in September. However, I, I do want to, you know, kind of, put a little bit of information on to this particular resolution. And so you know, what we're finding now, we had, first of all, I want to thank Chancellor Rodriguez for putting together with Nicole Aba-Lopez and Kelly King. We screened the PBS documentary LA Queer History at East LA College. I was at the LA LGBT Center last night, screened it there with the executive producers, as well as we're doing that at West LA College, I believe, and then also at Harvard College. What, what I want to say is that in light of, you know, some of the conversations that are to be had in regards to the comments of the LA City Council members, I do want to say that it was a real, a time to really reflect for our students to know how limited LGBTQ rights were just only ten years ago. So, you know, we discussed, this film really discussed, you know, being not able to rent an apartment in LA. You know, the Briggs Initiative back in the nineteen eighties, where if you were a gay man, you couldn't teach at a K-12 because you were seen as a predator. You can't, still in many states in the nation, can't give blood if you're a gay man because of the danger of HIV. The HIV crisis, our students, I believe, really benefited from this in more ways than I thought. I think they learned it from an academic point of view and then also learned it from a social point of view. So I dedicate this and, you know, thank all of you for supporting this resolution in light of what's happening and for the continued really fight and, you know, progress that we still have to make. So again, I hope that you join in also authoring this motion as well as voting for it today to really kind of give light to the history. And I want to show off a little bit. LA was the first city in the nation that actually did revolt for their rights. I know that, you know, I'm not going to say anything bad about New York and Stonewall, you know, going to give them credit, but really it was two years before in Silver Lake at the Black Cat Bar, and we saw that. And so, you know, the type of, you know, violent, you know, meeting we had with LAPD officers when people were beat almost and some to death that, that horrible evening on New Year's Eve in nineteen sixty-seven. So, yeah, lots of stuff.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Being done, roll call.
Student trustee Callan, his advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Absent. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes. May I have a second and a motion on, and a second on item F two, which is Filipino-American History Month?
So moved, Eno.
Moved by trustee Eno. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Callahan. Is there any comment?
I guess just add to a little bit of the history as well of the Filipino community. Los Angeles is, I believe, the second largest Filipino, Filipino-American community that we have. So to be able to have these types of resolutions and support this community is very essential. And our student population, I believe, is about three percent current or in the past. So they represent a significant number of our students. So, yes, thank you so much for having this one as well.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Being done, roll call.
Student trustee Callan has advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Absent. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
May I have a checking and a motion on item F three, which is Undocumented Student Week?
So moved.
The move by trustee?
Second, Callahan.
You know, and student trustee Callahan, second. Any comments?
I guess I'll have a comment on this one. I'm not undocumented, so, you know, I don't get those extra bonus points. But I do want to acknowledge that in many ways, different, you know, social groups and demographics are moving forward in society. And we look at the undocumented population, that's, it's not just looking at the people who are currently here and acknowledging and giving them the rest they deserve, but by giving undocumented students this attention and this recognition, we're opening up to the broader world in general. So little things like having a success week for undocumented students goes a long way to creating relationships, not just within the United States, but across the world and really showing that this is the place where we, we appreciate the, the people. No matter where you come from, no matter what your background is. So this, this, it's amazing that this is happening, and I guess I was going to talk about something else. I'll say, I won't, I won't like put my business on in the board meetings, but this is, this is really important, and yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge, we haven't held the DACA Student Affairs Committee, but we do have the monolingual committee with regard to monolingual education, which is to increasing the, not just access to the institution, but actually the curriculum with the institution as well. It's also important to acknowledge the fear of a lot of undocumented students attending or just kind of moving throughout our, our system and our city. I acknowledge that. Any other comments? Being none, roll call.
Student trustee Callan has advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Absent. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
May I have a motion and a second on item F four, which is National Custodial Recognition Day? Chris from SEIU Local Ninety-nine acknowledged earlier, but are there any?
I'll move to approve. This is trustee Hoffman.
Trustee Hoffman, is there a second?
Second, Callahan.
Second by trustee, student trustee Callahan. Comments?
Yes, please.
Trustee Eno?
So I had the honor of meeting with SEIU Ninety-nine, I think a week or two ago. It's getting kind of blurry now, but it was really nice to talk to Chris, who's, I think, hopefully still here, but as well, as well as a lot of the other custodial staff, and they really let me know how they, you know, essentially at times put their lives on the line, all the things that they've been doing pre-COVID, during COVID, and now, you know, as, as we all return back to campus. And, you know, I want to make sure in addition to resolutions, we also ensure that they are safe. They feel appreciated and respected, and I just want to say thank you for all of, all that you've done throughout your time here.
Thank you. Any other comments?
President Buena? Yes, and I've had the pleasure of also getting together with our custodians throughout the district. And I just wanted to thank them, and this is a well-deserved recognition for all their hard work. Thank you.
Any other additional comments? I also want to thank our, our, our custodians. My father was a custodian at the LA Times for twelve years. I also want to thank our, our, our custodians. My father was a custodian at the LA Times for 12 years. Paid for high school and college. So I want to acknowledge our custodians and thank them. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Comment from, uh, Kevin. Yeah, so again, I also want to comment and know, so appreciation for our custodians, but, um, also just pointing out the elephant in the room. This is simply a recognition day. So what they're asking for on our part in terms of respect and showing that we have actual support and giving them things they need, knowing that we're acknowledging that they need support and recognition, but just to keep in mind that there's still work that needs to be done. So even though we're recognizing them and giving them a day on the calendar, they still have another 364 days that they need to be appreciated. So every day you guys are appreciated, and I want you guys to know that.
Thank you, student trustee. Being no comments, roll call.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Absent. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes. Thank you very much. Next item, may I have a motion and a second on item F5? This is a telecommuting policy. Motion? The move, the move trustee Vela, second. Trustee Ino, second. Any comments? Being done, roll call.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Absent. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Moving on to item.
President, can I have a question about, I know this is an item that has, has been brought to the table per the law, the way the law is written. Was, was there any, I believe there were some bills that potentially modified some aspects of this, and is the plan to bring this again, or some version of this to the board again next time, or how are you going to adapt to the legislative changes that have occurred?
Well, we do expect that there'd be changes per the new laws. This will continue through, we expect this calendar year. And if we're examining the changes now, we'll relay those for a January 1st start.
And we intend, trustee Veras, we intend to provide the, the board an analysis of the new legislation and how it will impact the continued, the continued ability to teleconference and/or remotely attend board meetings.
Thank you, General Counsel. Moving on to item G, report from, from the chancellor. And chancellor, I believe you have some point to do to, for us today.
Yes, thank you so much. Good afternoon again, members of the board, colleagues throughout the district, and esteemed guests. We have, in this chancellor's report, two pieces that we will share today. The first is going to be an advancement update by Kelly King, who serves as our chief advancement officer and executive director for the Foundation for the Los Angeles Community Colleges. So she'll do the first part of this report, and then I will follow up with my report to the board. Ms. King?
Thank you, and thank you, President Buena, members of the board, Chancellor Rodriguez, for the chance to give you this update. So again, I'm Kelly King, and I serve as chief advancement officer for the district, as well as executive director of the Foundation for the Los Angeles Community Colleges. Probably the most words I've ever had in my title. And I wanted to start, we're going to go to the advancement slides, if that's okay. I'm going to start by talking a little bit about last year, which will be a few slides forward.
That's my presentation, by the way. I'm done.
Okay. If the slides aren't included, I'm happy to provide a verbal overview and then follow up with them if available. Okay, happy to do so. So looking at last year, I want to start by sharing a little bit about what was achieved across the district. And while annual audits will continue throughout the fall and spring, these are preliminary figures to give you a sense of the activities from last year. Across our foundation, our district, we have 11 foundations. We have one dedicated to each of our nine colleges, as well as one supporting the Vincent Price Art Museum, and finally, the Foundation for the Los Angeles Community Colleges, which is often known as the District Foundation, supporting activities throughout LACC. And across these foundations, more than $11 million was raised in support of a wide range of activities, from sustainability projects to basic needs grants. Last year, this resulted in more than $4 million in scholarships and other direct aid awarded to students, and more than 24,000 resource awards. These include scholarships, laptops, hotspots, and other necessary items for student success. And while this is phenomenal, it doesn't actually capture the true impact, as a lot of our foundations are bridging partnerships with corporations that result in paid internships or other advocacy efforts that highlight our district in the larger community. I wanted to also highlight, as an example of the work that we do, and specifically that of the District Foundation, one project that is particularly timely and important, and that is our work supporting Dreamers across our nine colleges. In 2021, through its support from the Mayor's Fund for Los Angeles, we launched expanded resources that support workshops at our nine Dream Resource Centers. We support students in warm handoffs and referrals to free, high-quality legal services from providers such as Chirla and Cressen. And we help pay for the fees so that students can apply for DACA renewal as well as advanced parole. Last year, this resulted in 727 students accessing DACA, 39 accessing advanced parole, and in total, more than 1,000 students across our colleges received this high-quality, free legal assistance combined with fee waivers. Now, given unfortunately both the ongoing and new limitations of DACA for new applicants, this year, we are expanding the range of legal services that are eligible for support. We want to focus as well on various visas, work permits, and even change of status. This is all designed so that students and Dreamers across our campuses have access to the stability that they deserve. So if you know any LACC student who is seeking these services or fee waivers, please direct them to the Dream Resource Centers at their campus. Now, this next one has a bit of a visual, so I'm going to summarize a little bit for you. But I get to wear multiple hats. And in my first hat, as chief advancement officer, under the direction of the chancellor, I advance strategic partnerships, serve as a connector, and advocate on behalf of the district. So for example, a few months ago, I worked with President Ribbons, and we featured the incredible work of LA Valley College as a giving opportunity for funders throughout the state looking to invest in dual enrollment. Now, under the same hat, my team and I get to support the 11 foundations across the district. And priorities for this year include collaboration, a strong focus on ongoing compliance with federal, state, local, and district requirements, and assessment. In a very structured way, we want to understand how do we leverage the assets of each of these entities to maximize our impact and maximize efficiency. And finally, my last hat is as executive director of the Foundation for the Los Angeles Community Colleges. Priorities this year include raising our profile through social media and other new venues for us, easing the transition into post-pandemic giving. The needs of our students haven't changed, but the interests of many funders and donors have caught up with a little bit of fatigue, and we need to adjust our case statements to maximize giving. We again want to focus on the sweet spot of multi-college, multi-agency collaborations, focus on excellence in implementation and stewardship. Perfect, we're right there in the green box. And this is, when we get that check, that's actually the beginning of our job. The way we implement, the way we steward, the way we measure and share results, that's what drives change, and that's what's going to make us eligible for continued and ongoing funding. And finally, we continue to focus on endowed funds. Our District Foundation opened its first last year with the generosity of Mike Rose before his passing, and I project us to be at a three endowed funds by the end of this year. And finally, under the new board leadership, Lizette Carvahal, want to really think about our board and the impact they can have in partnership with the district. So all of these threads will come together, and we want you to be excited that in spring 2023, we hope to, we plan to, we will, have a philanthropy summit to talk about how all of this can come together in the spirit and interest of our district and students. Okay, my final slide does have pictures, which you get to see, and this is a little bit of what we've been working on. So in my first quarter here at the district, facilitated activities such as that major webinar I talked about, corporate partner tours to our campuses, including Best Buy and PepsiCo and Amazon. Odyssey Radio ran a month-long campaign highlighting Hunger Action Month and giving to our campuses. And our District Foundation is well on its goal. Our target initially for this year was $2.7 million raised. And as you can see, we've made great progress already in our first quarter towards that goal. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um, I'll, I'll take some quick questions from, from the trustees. I, I just want to acknowledge the quality of your presentation right now. You know, along with the slides, but just the, the intersectionality, taking trustee Henderson's word, of everything that you just connected in a very, very complex, and, and we did this, wanted this presentation in order to make sure that the philanthropic component of LACC is fully acknowledged. But just your, your background, just everything, your presentation is awesome. And I'm also looking forward in, in knock on wood, the passing of Measure LA and, and the role of philanthropy in that, in that upcoming process, knock on wood. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you very much for the presentation. Comments from trustees? Thank you.
President Buena, have my hand up. I don't know if you can see that.
I was about to call on, on, on you, trustee Hoffman.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. King. That was, I echo President Buena's remark. That was a superb presentation and very impressive. Please reach out to us and let us know, as trustees, what we can do to support your work, because I would be happy to participate, make phone calls, go with you on visits, whatever it is that you need from us as trustees. I know you have a foundation board, and that's really terrific, but if there's something in particular that we can do, please reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Veras?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I think one of them has always been sort of a struggle because of the number of foundations that are existing, but trying to connect, obviously, the alumni piece of the equation. There's no alumni of LACC either. They're an alumni of a college. So oftentimes, the identity of the colleges is, is where they seek the connection. But curious to, to see your thoughts on what the future of alumni giving is. And then, and as a secondary question, have we, in, in terms of the process to, I don't know, I guess I want to say maybe a clearinghouse style, so that people aren't crashing into each other in terms of applying for similar grants? I think in the academic world, we sometimes have that challenge where three or four colleges are applying for the same in grants, and hopefully it works out, and they can each get an individual grant. But just from the standpoint of, you know, if you've got a bunch of entities out there and they're all seeking the same target, you know, how are we arranging that? Is it, is it just because we're going to communicate more frequently and better? Or is there some system of clearinghouse now?
Well, first, we will communicate more frequently and better, but beyond that, each of the foundations and each of the colleges and different entities have unique opportunities. So the District Foundation can run and apply for multi-college, multi-agency partnerships, like that one with the Los Angeles Mayor's Fund, and has a different opportunity to bring that to the table than a different organization might. The Vincent Price Museum has a board that is expert and well-connected to funding streams that is unique to the art world and is not necessarily replicated in other entities within our group. But I think it's a question we need to continue to assess, and we can also think about how we work together. So for example, Odyssey was interested in a district-wide radio campaign, but we sought to feature activities and make connections to each of our colleges and redistribute the funds directly to the colleges where they're going to be most immediately put into use, not running programs out of the District Foundation alone. So these are some of the things that we're continuing to assess, but I think it's a great question.
And on the alumni front, I know.
Oh, alumni front.
And I'm going to, obviously, we, like, I probably spell here most frequently from ELAC alumni group. But there are alumni, maybe they're embedded in the local foundations, or maybe they're viewed differently, but how, how do we look at alumni? Because I think if you see major college giving out there, alumni is a key factor.
Yeah. And I think too often, alums of our colleges have not been encouraged to lead with their pride. They lead with maybe the college they attended most recently and not where they got their start, or where they got their best chance. I'm thinking of the colleges. So I think there's a lot we can do to celebrate. And then I think of the Reggie Run happening at Harvard. I don't know the history of the crocodile or the alligator, but that is important to that campus, and that's where we can partner with Harbor College to celebrate and bring that local cultural history and connect better with the community and alumni.
Is Reggie used to chasing?
Is it a crocodile or alligator? I don't know, but I know it lived next door to campus.
It was in the lake next door. Yeah.
Okay.
I have one comment.
At the zoo, yeah.
See, this is why it's important.
I, I do have to acknowledge the alumni at, at ELAC, or else Marielena Yepes will give me a phone call within 10 minutes to say that ELAC is moving, it's embedded within the ELAC Foundation, and a few of us are going to be at the reception later on this, this evening. But I just want to acknowledge that. The other, the other thing, I know I said it earlier, but really, really appreciate the strategic approach you're taking in connecting and connecting everything. Trustee Vela? And our second vice president, trustee Henderson, is present and in the house. Trustee Vela?
Yes, um, thank you again. Very great presentation. I think I was at the PepsiCo. I was really impressed with the protocol and kind of the way everyone kind of came together. And it seemed as if there was a lot of coordination between them and our, our side and including the college. So I want to commend you on that. And then, you know, for the sake of like, being a better, and like, marketing situation, it was really helpful that we had two state assembly members there, because, I mean, I don't necessarily know if our students might, you know, be as interested, but certainly Pepsi was, right? And I think we do have to continue our partnerships with our local, or not our local, but our state legislators and congressional folks. Because it, it, you know, they came, Pepsi came up to me and told me that that was something they appreciated, so I want to thank them that. But really quick question. So when the donors are looking for other things, I'm, have no doubt that, you know, after the pandemic, like, everything's topsy-turvy. So what are some of the actual things they're looking at briefly that you might want to share with us?
Yeah. Well, first, I want to thank Maria Velos for her assistance in government relations. We're working closely together, and I think that event was evidence of that.
You did great.
Yeah. Um, so traditionally, we've thought a lot about scholarships and direct aid, which remains extremely critical. But I know that there is other impact to be made by making sure that all aspects of our college and district support student success. So some might be interested, as they have been, in scholarships or direct assistance. Some are interested in understanding what are the faculty asking for to be most effective in teaching and learning in that space. That is a very different type of grant-making that typically is large institutional funders, but that's where there's a lot of opportunity as well. So I think everything's on the table, not because we want to be just jointed, but because we do everything here at LACC and we can demonstrate excellence and opportunity in almost every area. I would like to make sure over time to really highlight what are the priorities of the district for impact and align our case statements and our giving menu to better reflect those.
And I would appreciate, you know, a resource like trustee Callahan, our student advisory committee for, for that, as well as our faculty and staff. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, didn't miss you, student trustee Callahan.
Oh, me? Yeah, so I guess, I guess kind of touched on it. Just in.
Um, um, just in that last comment, um, what are the, what are we going to prioritize? How are we going to focus the interests of these philanthropists towards um, what our needs are? But I guess, how will we really, how would we really go about focusing those interests and guiding them so that we make sure they're for the benefit of the students? Because I love scholarships, but um, if everybody's doing it, how do we know that's the most effective way to provide um, students with the, you know, the things that they need?
Thank you for that. And I think a lot about what does the donor think is the need versus what do our students and faculty and staff know is going to be most impactful? And how you find the middle ground or the proximate answer to that question? I would like to bring students even more into our process. Our team is talking about how we can employ and embed students in all that we do so that we can best answer that question. But I think that's what we, we think about every day, how to maximize impact and make it best reflective of the needs and opportunities.
Any additional comments? One second, one second. Any additional comments from, from trustees? Um, I'll finish it out with um, the Vincent Price Museum grant. I want to acknowledge um, Dr. Nish, um, initially, you didn't know I was going to say something nice. Um, is the work, um, that, that work took about three to four years when we did an audit of the Vincent Price Museum and it recognized a need. So that, you know, you know, um, so yes, when you get the money, barely starts, but that process took three to four years to get to that point where that check was delivered. Um, and I think it was, it was trustee upon, uh, assemblyman upon who delivered that check. So I just wanted to kind of acknowledge that, that long process, but thank you very much. No trustee has any other question? Awesome presentation.
Thank you.
And now we have a presentation from our chancellor, which is same venue, different mode. Uh, Chancellor, do you want to share with the, the district why we're switching modes a little?
Yes, yes, thank you. At the great advice and interest of the board of trustees, they thought that on an annual basis it would be useful to have a state of the district. And October is a fitting month in which uh, to do that. So this brief report to the trustees and to the community is a snapshot of the comprehensive and impactful work happening across the district. And I hope that as we looked at the agenda today, the activities and resolutions that the board has approved already, the investments that they will support uh, forthcoming, the reports from the college presidents and whatnot, it really does give a deep sense of the place, the purpose uh, and the people at LACC D. So what I'd like to do today is, again, briefly uh, talk about uh, this state of the district. And really, it gave uh, me and others an opportunity to reflect, to assess the health of our organization, to celebrate some of the past year's activities and accomplishments, and always to identify potential areas for growth and improvement. We are now transitioning thankfully out of the global health crisis and adapting relatively smoothly to our new educational environment. Not without its challenges, however. But what remains, members of the board, is our enduring institutional commitment and professional dedication to ensuring access to our nine colleges, identifying and breaking down the historical barriers to our most vulnerable student populations, safeguarding LACC D's ability to continue to offer high-quality, affordable, accessible learning opportunities for all the students that we proudly serve. As we build for the future, there are changes on the horizon. The state level, national level, clearly local levels uh, that will have significant implications for our institutions. Being able to anticipate what those changes are and lead some of those changes is what we will do. Today's presentation will touch on a few critical areas that I consider to be a pillar or pillars of a well-functioning educational institution. So I only have about this five or six slides, so I'll try to move through this uh, quickly. So in building for the future, uh, as we uh, build capacity, we must build community. So in looking at the, that kind of theme, these are the areas that I will touch on. Accreditation is how we ensure to our public and to our students that we have quality assurance. And it happens every seven years and the accreditation process is well underway at LACC D. All nine colleges have submitted their ICERS or the Institutional Self-Evaluation Reports. That's been done and now those reports are being vetted through all the appropriate bodies. And ultimately, you approve those uh, in July of twenty twenty-two. The visiting peer teams are formed. And during the first two weeks of October, which is now, they've begun their initial review of the colleges and are identifying follow-up areas. Good number of those visits took place, virtually some in person. The visiting peer teams, which are colleagues, which is a peer review process, uh, they are scheduled to visit our colleges the last week of February through the first week of March of twenty uh, twenty-three. And we again expect strong results from this accreditation visit. Let's talk about remote work. The COVID nineteen pandemic has fundamentally shifted people's lives, including the way in which people work. As a result, traditional office work may never be the same. At LACC D, we piloted three remote work locations this past year and the board approved the telecommuting policy, Board Policy seven two eighty, that we're asking you to change its name to remote work uh, today. The administrative procedure, which took several weeks to prepare, uh, has been completed. Pertain details are being finalized now to ensure that every employee knows how the program works and that all participating employees can receive the proper training and resources needed to work effectively and remotely. Service to LACC D students and to the communities we serve will remain paramount. If we are to engage in remote work successfully, we must ensure optimal learning and service environments at all times through appropriate training, support, and indeed a supervision. Implementing carefully and intentionally, the flexibility for partial remote work can serve LACC D's interest by allowing the district to attract and retain employees. It also reduces our collective carbon or environmental footprint and enables our district to remain competitive in ever-changing twenty-first century job landscape. The district is now consulting on the effects of this procedure with our representative employee groups. And we're planning the rollout of this remote work program on or about November fifteenth of this year. An exciting and much-needed transformation for community colleges was the passage of Assembly Bill nine twenty-seven, signed into law last year. This law makes bachelor degrees, the programs piloted at the fifteen community colleges, including West LA, permanent and allows the, the, the California community colleges to offer up to thirty new bachelor degrees programs uh, per year. As I mentioned, West LA currently offers the only bachelor's degree program in the district at the moment in dental hygiene. And here is the truth, and President Limbaugh, I say this with tremendous amount of pride in colleagues. It is the most successful bachelor science degree program at a two-year college in the state of California. Outstanding facilities, outstanding faculty, outstanding curriculum, and of course, wonderful students and community partnerships uh, in that. Several LACC D colleges are planning to work on an application to offer a bachelor's degree focused on preparing students for careers in high-demand occupations. L A Mission College will be submitting its biomanufacturing degree proposal for approval of, in January of this year, for example. So we are well on our way to providing technical workforce degrees at our colleges. Remote work will require us to become more reliant on the internet and technology. For this reason, redesigning our websites could not have come at a more critical time. I'm looking at Vice Chancellor Litz. Over the past eighteen months, the district undertook a massive district-wide project to redesign our websites for our nine colleges and the district office, all ten at one time. The project's objective is to develop a cohesive web presence that is primarily student-centric. Our website designs, its vision is intended to provide the best user experience for our students with seamless navigation across our colleges. Input for this design was solicited from our students and faculty and feedback was incorporated to ensure a successful upcoming launch. Each college has built a brand infusing the college's unique culture and college spirit throughout the content that's been created. The new websites will launch on the modern technology platform this month. So I wanted to congratulate Vice Chancellor Litz and her team and others for leading that process. Outstanding. Along with the updated technology and expanded digital services comes updating our educational facilities for improved teaching and learning. And you know, Dr. Ruben Spencer, pretty cool guy, pretty calm guy, but you start talking facilities, he starts getting really excited about the, the facilities bond and Measure L A. And we all should be excited about what could happen and what is happening with the public's investment in LACC D since two thousand and one uh, through various facilities bonds. This year, this board of trustees, forward-looking, and at staff's recommendation, authorized a five-point-three-billion-dollar bond measure, Measure L A, uh, on the November eighth ballot. Uh, this measure does not add additional square footage, but instead focuses on repairing and upgrading existing outdated buildings, addressing basic campus infrastructure, improvements in technology and in our athletic fields, and of course, to support our very vigorous, forward-looking sustainability agenda. The bond aims to provide high-quality educational facilities that enhance safe, equitable, and supportive learning environments for our faculty, staff, and our students. This measure seeks to improve student life and engagement while reducing operating costs and increasing the use of clean energy alternatives throughout sustainable and resilient practices. Measure L A also provides opportunities to explore affordable student and workforce housing. As noted, there will continue to be strict oversight, governance, accountability, and transparency for our bond program. We have had excellent stewardship and project administration while safeguarding the public's money, their interests, and most importantly, their trust. LACC D plays a role uh, in the economic recovery of Los Angeles County and in Southern California and all the region. As the largest community college district in the state and perhaps the largest in the nation, we've had a significant impact on the U S higher education system. So if we can go to the next slide, I want us to focus in on workforce and on restoring enrollments. We provide regional workforce training and serve as a gateway to the four-year university and to colleges and as a pathway to the middle class. That is the role, that is the power, that is the influence of community colleges. For these reasons, restoring enrollments is so critical to the healthy well-being of our district. So let's talk a little bit about uh, restoring enrollments. I'll look at dual enrollment, a snapshot to fall twenty twenty-two, touch on college promise, and then end this section on adult education. This fall, our district is beginning to see recovery, finally, of its enrollment and student populations. Based on the most recent fall twenty twenty-two data, the student headcount and duplicated enrollment increased by one percent and three percent from fall twenty-one to fall twenty-two respectively. With six of our nine colleges experiencing good-sized growth, you heard Dr. Culpepper earlier, compared to last year so far. And the second eight weeks are underway very, very shortly. And I fully expect our colleges to continue to grow, to continue that service to our students and the colleges uh, that are not quite at the number of last year to, to pick up steam and to hit those targets. So while not all student populations and groups are experiencing the same recovery, it's encouraging members of the board, colleagues, to see some key student populations that had previously been in decline since fall of nineteen, now displaying increases for this fall compared to last year. For example, first-time students up eighteen percent. Returning students up thirteen percent. Dual-enrolled or concurrent high school students up thirteen percent. Students under the age of twenty up five percent. Male students plus three, full-time students overall plus eight. Black students, African-American students plus eleven percent. And Latino-Chicano students plus five percent. That's reason to be optimistic about some of the work, some of the recovery that is going on. What's helping that is dual enrollment. As you know, it creates partnerships across, in between high schools and community colleges that enables a broader range of students to take college classes. I know as a college counselor, uh, the Dr. Kino, uh, Eno, excuse me, Dr. Eno, that you see students who are wonderful dual-enrolled, uh, students at El Camino. It, it fosters a sense of belonging within a college community. It provides access for students, especially those who have limitations in their high school curricula or who are not prepared for college-level work. And we have seen that also can help close equity gaps. There's been a steady increase in the number of concurrently enrolled students, uh, high school students at the LACC D, and our colleges have increased outreach efforts to local high schools, as you've heard the college presidents report on today. The number will grow as we continue to have more MOUs with local K-twelves within the LA service area. Adult education and marketing, really exciting developments are going on here. Uh, we have a long history, LACC D, of providing adult education over the past year. And we served an enrollment of over forty-two thousand five hundred students with over twenty-one hundred courses and well over thirty-eight hundred awards earned in this past year alone. We want to grow this population, so we are investing in adult ed and supporting the work of our local consortia along the way. To reengage adult learners in a post-pandemic environment and grow, LACC D has launched the first phase of its adult education-specific marketing campaign. We did this in August and we invested one point two million dollars to promote and rebrand adult education across the district. So as we look at the next phase of this, we're going to look at the data, look at the metrics to inform our branding and the long-term marketing strategy. So investment in adult education, adult learners will continue. Let's uh, finish this area with college promise. You know, that pr- program is five-plus years old now. We first started that out and we were one of the first at scale to put this program, type of program uh, together. If you look at its first cohort in the fall of twenty seventeen, it consisted of just over uh, four thousand students. To examine the impact, we looked at the outcomes of fall of sixteen, L A U S D first-time, full-time college entrance to fall of seventeen, now Promise students, and found that the full-time enrollment increased in that one year alone from L A U S D by fifteen percent. The number of students who completed transfer-level English and math courses, the number of students in those courses doubled in one year. The fall-to-fall persistent rates increased by twenty-three percent and the students completing their program within three years increased by forty-three percent. That's an amazing set of circumstances. It's not just about college tuition. It's about the excellent wraparound support services and the excellent counseling, excellent teaching, and wraparound support that our district provides to college Promise students. The second-year program equally is impressive with thirty-three percent increase in enrollment uh, with uh, over nearly, since that time, twenty-five thousand students have participated in the L A College Promise Program and projected to be over five thousand students now this fall. So while we are exploring new strategies, uh, we're relying on these, on our current uh, pillars, if you will, uh, these strategies to restore enrollments to previous higher levels uh, that are, that uh, that have been in place at the colleges and the progress is encouraging and indeed promising. Let's move to the next slide and move to uh, the fiscal health of, of the organization. Let me turn to fiscal health. The district's adopted fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three final budget, as Ms. Gordon will attest. The total is five point two billion for all funds. That's a lot of money. The district maintains, per board policy, a minimum of six point five percent general reserve, a three point five percent contingency reserve, and a two percent deferred maintenance fund, as, as I mentioned, as mandated by the policy. The fiscal outlook for the district's finances remains stable under the current state-adopted student-centered funding formula and the current hold harmless provision. The budget modified the hold harmless provision for the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six. So we're working towards all the elements to gain support, enrollments, and funding from the new SCIF uh, formula. For the longer-term fiscal health of LACC D, there is a fiscal imperative, as is pretty obvious, to increase enrollments, to bolster access and indeed equity, to retain and graduate more students by improving course completions, to increase the number of degrees and certificates granted, to yield more transfer students and to achieve other, what is described as progression points. And we will do just that. Financial health also requires audits. An annual financial audit of the district is conducted every fiscal year by independent auditors and reported to the board of trustees. The district received an unmodified opinion on the financial, single audits, and bond financial audits for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, as it has for years. And just so folks can know, an unmodified opinion means that the basic financial statements referred to in the audit presented uh, presents the district's financial position and the results of its operations and cash flows for the year ends in, ended in conformity and with generally accepted accounting principles. That's a very, very good thing. The outstanding audits are a testament to Ms. Gordon and to her team uh, and to the commitment of this district to ensure financial integrity, transparency, and accountability. LACC D is undergoing now the audit and expects to be seeing the same unmodified opinion. Let me end this section by talking about our bond ratings, since that's a germane, current and important uh, topic. By way of our bond ratings, the district continues to receive excellent bond ratings from Moody's and Standard and Poor's because of our strong and stable financial position. In August of this year, the district met with the rating agencies, and both Moody's and Standard and Poor's reaffirmed the district's very high ratings of triple-A and double-A plus. Again, a wonderful way to examine the fiscal health of this organization. Maintaining clean audits and keeping excellent bond ratings are two important financial performance measures. Equally as important for our financial strength is monitoring and influencing what happens in Sacramento concerning the funding formula and unfunded mandates. For this reason, we keep a watchful eye and strong relationships with policymakers in Sacramento and Washington, D.C. We've been very active in telling our story and the stories of our students to educate policymakers about the needs and challenges facing our community college students. Let's look here on, on, on this area that talks about completions. This might be a little hard to read, but let me give you just a little taste of what this is. These are completions, these are our degrees, these are our certificates that we put forth and on, 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 on a regular basis. If you look at the twenty sixteen, seventeen levels of the associate degrees, that's the bar in blue, to our high levels in twenty twenty-one, you could see the increase of essentially what looks like, you know, eleven thousand five hundred to over twenty thousand, just, you know, forty-plus percent increase during that time in associate degree conferrals. The certificates of achievement, that's the orange bar there, you could see a growth of eighty-six hundred to, to our high point of twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-one. Again, just under or plus forty percent increase in that during that time. And then you see the precipitous drop in twenty-one, twenty-two due to all the factors that we described below, principally a lower number of students who are in our colleges able to complete those degrees. We've got to get those trends up, and it looks like our plans are underway to increase enrollments and obviously to increase our academic strength there. The next slide here talks about our workforce, and you know, we clearly understand that our workforce programs build a pipeline between community colleges and jobs and that we embrace, understand, and we're committed to building a robust economic and workforce development system to meet our region's employment and educational needs and improve the economic and social mobility of Los Angeles workers. Look at these numbers just for a moment. L A C C D offers nearly twenty-seven hundred associate degrees, over twenty-three hundred credit certificates, and over three hundred non-credit certificates. And on the non-credit side and degree side and the credit side, more are on the way. Let me recognize our nine colleges and the faculty there for developing thirty-two new certificate programs across these high-need industry sectors, such as machine learning, cybersecurity analyst, allied health preparation, construction framing, nonprofit work, facilities management, and athletic training and sports medicine. These are just a few of the very important certificates and degrees that we're moving forth with. We've also co-located America's Job Centers of California on five of our campuses with complementary partnerships on the other four campuses and have built strong industry alliances to solve the complex large-scale education and workforce challenges facing our region. So that's a little bit about economic and workforce development. The next slide here, let's conclude with what we do with, with local advocacy. I think Mr. Vella gave the report, he must have had my notes from this, but let me just say a couple of things. It bears, some of it bears indeed repeating, and I think it's something that we should all be very, very, very proud of, and that is that our, our work resulted, as you could see, as we, as you see there, expand our reach, resulted in the passage of a state budget that reflects ultimately an equity-first agenda. It reflects an agenda that promotes access to higher education for all and the students and communities that we serve. Our legislation earmarks increased access to quality higher education, and we should be very, very proud of that. And you've heard mention at the federal level, we received an unprecedented six point three million for five of our colleges to do its work. And in twenty twenty-three, another five proposals are in place totaling about seven million. At the state level, you heard about the six bills that we sponsored last year. Four of these bills were successfully passed, and the legislature, three were incorporated into the twenty twenty-two state budget, and then Governor Newsom signed A B fourteen ninety-two, the instructional services agreement bill as a standalone entity, so we're very, very proud of that. So we had budget priorities and resources that came as a result of that. Of course, that requires state-level tremendous support there. The district has deep ties with several local government officials that have helped spread the word about our colleges, our programs, our student support services, and these relationships have enabled us to further reach our stakeholders, to further increase awareness, and to further demonstrate the very clear values of a community college education. The last piece is strategic communications. We coordinated the wonderful press conferences throughout the year that generated, and this is a way to generate actual value, over half a million dollars in ad value, and it went to six million household views. Think about that for a minute in terms of the impact that these kinds, this kind of work has. We do press releases, as Mr. Vella knows, and the members of the legislative team, that amplifies our voice about our district and the issues that are important there. So I wanted to thank Maria Velos and her team for reaching out and doing the good work of this last, past year. In conclusion, and I know that's, everyone starts the perk up and says, all right, he's done. The people, the place, the purpose that we call L A C C D, it's a real special place. We're going to always focus in on what's best for students. Dr. McKeever and I have, and I have had some deep conversations about what that looks like. What's best for students? Our district will use this tool called education as, and if I could say it this way, our open and visible superpower to accelerate educational opportunity and achievement, to redress intergenerational poverty and economic inequality, and to accelerate social change and justice in our communities. And I believe you've seen a series of actions the board takes that we propose that support just that. So thank you for the opportunity to share a snapshot of some of the most exciting and promising initiatives and challenges that we will work with together to address. So I look forward to working with you, members of the board, colleagues throughout the district, to carry out these and other opportunities to provide the high-quality education that our community deserve, that, and that our students demand and that they expect. So that is, that is the end of my report, members of the board, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'm gonna start to my right from the trustees. I, or in person, and then, Alhan, any question?
Um, no questions. Well, actually, I do have a question, but I'll save it for the end of the Q and A. But I do want to say that was a wonderful presentation, Chancellor.
Thank you, sir.
But I do want to have the question later on, so I'll wait until everybody has passed around, and then we'll come back to it.
To the public watching, this is a new communication mode meant to communicate with the entire district, you know, through this meeting and through the recording of the state of the district, our strategic goals, accomplishments, and some of our challenges as well. So thank you for that, Chancellor, very much. Trustee Henderson, any question?
I don't have a question, Chancellor. I just want to say thank you for the report. It was very thorough, and I'm very pleased to, to see the growth in student enrollment and the discussions that we have had regarding outreach, regarding the importance of maintaining our, well, increasing our numbers to, you know, previous standards. And we've been doing that, so I'm, I'm very pleased with that and, and everybody who did all of that grunt work to make it happen, so thank you for the report.
Thank you for recognizing that.
Trustee, then?
Just wanted to thank you, you know, for the report. I kind of know it a little too much, which scares me a little bit. But the, the reality is, as you move forward, Chancellor, I, you know, would really, really appreciate you forecasting for us, you know, our enrollment and budget status, you know, because we had a very great fiscal year at the state, at least last year. In twenty-one, we saw unprecedented budget surpluses, and so I just want to make sure that, you know, we foresee a tough spot in the future, you know, as we're, you know, going through that storm, that we have all of the life vests, make sure our employees stay with us, to make sure that our students are with us, to make sure that everything that we stand for. So it's a big task for you, but I'm pretty confident that you're gonna have the ability and courage to do it, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I'm sure that plan is already in your head, and you're already preparing for all of those things that are coming towards our future, but thank you so much for the presentation, all of the metrics, care and concern that you put into it, and the growth really demonstrates the power of L A C C D and all of the people, the playing parts, right? From the students to the employees, to the staff, to the faculty, to the managers, and it's impressive and exciting, and I'm grateful to be part of this, to support this whole process moving forward, so thank you.
That is? You know, I, I don't need to, I guess I could say I could echo all the comments prior to me. Or heard it, so I do want to ask a question in the area that I think is, is something that I think we've talked about through the years, and I think we endeavor, and in, and sometimes in, in challenging times, we'd like to take those opportunities to advance, and we talked about revisiting the social equity and racial justice framework that we have. Where, where do you see our sort of space to challenge all the entities that do business with us to have a higher, a social responsibility calling? How do we, you know, I, I know we've, with our clean energy resolution, we've talked about vendors and packaging and just down the trail of, of, of contracting here. But we do so much business, I mean, the vast majority of our agenda is going to go very quickly today, and it has with the small contracts that mostly become mundane. But how do we insert those greater callings? Because this is an institution of greater calling to provide service, but how can we take that and make the business of greater calling more socially equitable and more socially responsive?
That's a great question and a powerful one as a entity that is a public agency that does business and desires to do business with others to maintain the operations of our institution, to bring value to our organization, to provide business growth opportunities to others. You know, within the laws that we have, we do have small, local, emerging, and disabled veterans provisions that we have, and there are still other opportunities to attract particular disenfranchised and, and otherwise audiences and businesses to L A C C D. So the first step, and you heard a little bit of it today in the report, the legislative, the FEMPAC report, is to ensure that those entities know that we are open for business and a place of business, and so that they can get the right training, bootcamping, if you will, so that they can have competitive bids. Our procurement process is a very competitive process. Many want to do work with us, getting on a master list to do work is take some time, get on a vendor list, takes some time and it takes some knowledge, and in some cases, some stewardship to ensure that, that businesses that reflect the values of this organization are in the milieu there. The other piece is to incentivize, you know, to what extent with the laws that we have can we incentivize what is, and give points to and score higher on those entities that have demonstrated some level of corporate responsibility, some, some level of social responsibility, where they have invested through their company in entities, organizations, causes that coincide with the public's purpose and with the mission of L A C C D. And so to the, in other words, to actually give scores, to points to rate higher those organizations that have demonstrated, not just to this moment that they're engaged with L A C C D, but have a historical commitment to underserved, marginalized, and, and communities of sorts. So that, those are two things that come to mind, awareness, preparation, and then incentivizing that. But we are a place of business, and it behooves us to ensure that those entities with the veterans organizations, because, you know, Proposition Two oh nine puts some, puts limitations on us for public contracting, for public hiring, and for employment purposes and whatnot, but there are still things that, there are still tools that we have.
And I know this has been asked through the time, but perhaps maybe this is the time to drill down deeper and, and of, within the context of the law, I mean, certainly geographically, and people can have an impact geographically, our service territory is quite large. So to know we do business with people that have a positive impact in our geography is something that's certainly legal and, and able to be done. But there are other creative ideas as well, and I think that's important. You know, I've always appreciated, you know, our, our intern programs and sort of, you know, obviously in the build side with Dr. Smith, we have a threshold component. We do a certain number of business, and as far as you to, to have, to carry on, you know, an expansion of, of, of the learning and space. So those areas, I think at some, at some point, you know, we've talked about it and touched it, and we've tried it, but then we may want to consider how we can innovate and be more, and coming from a territory this large, like, what do you do for us here? What do you do for these communities here? Because they are some of the poorest and most disadvantaged in the entire state of California, without a doubt. So to understand economic impact and social impact, we're very successful.
And sometimes the communities, I would agree, Mr. That is, the communities that help us and support us the most.
The, the second question I had is just on diversity within our, our, our staff and teaching ranks. And I know we've, sometimes we're able to make moves when there are positions allocated, but, and sometimes when we don't have positions, the prioritizations, the whole process within the schools, but I think I've always endeavored to see our, our workforce reflect the people they serve. And I think that's, you know, we may not be making the kind of, right? I think if we were to, to make that progress at the rate we're going, it would take another forty, fifty years before we have, you know, sort of a workforce where students can look up and say, well, that, you know, has a common experience with me. But additional thoughts, I mean, it's not part of the presentations, but it's part of conversations for a while. Any additional thoughts on diversity? And totally, I mean, I think I entered this conversation, you know, a few years back, we were talking about Prop sixteen and a few other sort of opportunity spaces, but those are to the side now. What, you know, with that moved forward with COVID hopefully behind us, you know, the question of, of, you know, having a open, welcoming workforce without hiring practices that may be biased or even micro-biased, you know, where are the spaces that we can actually make substantial improvements?
Thank you for that question as well. Thoughtful, a proposition to have an important strategic and education purposeful proposition to have a faculty, staff, and administration that reflects the rich racial and gender diversity of, of the students and regions that we serve, that just makes good sense. And, and data has suggested that when that occurs, outcomes improve. So the idea for us, and actually over the last five years, and I did track this since twenty fourteen, some recent data, we have made improvements, small but important improvements in the racial and gender, gender diversification of our full-time faculty tenure track, as one example. We were lagging, I mean, we've made some gains since then, and I'm happy to, to share those. Why that has happened? Well, first and foremost, in the faculty prioritization process, when it goes through the, the important consulting at the campuses, if, when it reaches the, the screening levels, and if there isn't a diverse enough pool, and because I've been part of this, we extend the search, stop the search, or go back out, if you will. So in other words, to ensure that initially the pool of applicants are reflective of the kinds of individuals, experiences, circumstances that we feel would be educationally Um, that we feel would be educationally purposeful and beneficial to the classroom, to the enterprise of this organization, so that's. Where it begins, not to wait till the end, if you will, when you have of uh. Fewer um diverse applicants, if you will, in the finalists pool, so the president who also has the tool of going back out, stopping the search. And whatnot, if indeed the pool or the folks forwarded do not match specifically what the needs of that particular department are. For the college or the region, so there are some authority tools. That we have to stop processes when we, when it doesn't pass the eye test, when it doesn't pass the 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 H R. A test, if you will, so that that's one. The other piece that you can look on that continuum to ensure that the questions, the application, the onboarding process, that it's not. Inherent inherently biased, that somehow turns people on or that some somehow uh reflects. Or assesses the capacity of a person inappropriately uh or whatnot, in other words. We have to ensure that there is not bias associated with our materials, but the questions that we ask, until those responses are assessed. Uh, so and whatnot, and that's why we have very robust and rigorous a training with our. With our EEO officers who are in those particular uh committees to stop the show if indeed something is 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 not appropriate. So I would say that would be another important element for us, but ultimately, I would say just to conclude. Is that what kind of climate and conditions are we inviting people into? In other words, we have an academic community spread throughout nine hundred square miles of Los Angeles County. What kind of academic environment are we inviting people to? Are they going to be nurtured, supported, affirmed? Do we see the whole person or just the parts that make us feel comfortable? Uh, those sorts of things, so that's, I think, climate is super important to ensure that we that we have climatic conditions that are indeed conducive. To personal growth and learning, conducive to professional development, uh conducive to uh people be being their whole selves. Uh, and and being able to provide a service uh that is consistent with the highest level of quality, so. I mean, there's quite a bit of work that we can do, there's been some progress that has been made, um, but it requires a strict scrutiny on our part. And it requires us to be diligent and forthright uh when there are things that need to be remedied. And in the framework for social uh racial equity and social justice, we lay out very specific action steps, including. This one related to H R practices, EEO, ensuring that we have a diversity in our pools and excellence, you know, uh throughout the ranks.
Trustee um Moreno, do you have any comment or?
Yeah, just a couple of points. Um, in the uh. Enrollment report, I noticed that we had growth, I believe, in dual enrollment. Uh, Chancellor, do you know how much of our growth, the minimal growth we've experienced? Is uh a result of an increase in dual enrollment?
Well, it's it's rather, I I would say, I I don't believe it's significant, but it's not the full reason that our colleges are growing. The colleges are growing because the students, as I mentioned in the report, those that are from uh those that are. From particular demographic groups, uh and I mentioned some of those statistics, that does not include the dual enrollment of population. But our increased outreach to high schools has indeed bolstered and we are seeing the results of that. We do expect that to continue, but if I understand the question, is the reason we're growing principally due to dual enrollment, the answer is no. Uh, but it does, it does provide a significant lift to our overall.
We've we've grown our dual enrollment from uh last year, is that what your statistic says?
It, well, y- yes, that is correct.
The reason I raise the issue is because I I believe dual enrollment, that the classes are being conducted at the site, not on our campus.
It's both, we're doing both, yeah, yeah, I consider duly enrolled if they're. Uh, if they have a high school status or under eighteen years of age, a good number, it does occur at the high school sites, that is correct.
Right, we've al- we've always had uh. High school students even before we had dual enrollment, but I would assume dual enrollment stems primarily from our coordination of classes at the high school.
That's correct.
Right, because it impacts the number of students we have on campus, realizing that a good portion of our students. And as low as we are in terms of enrollment, I might add one of the lowest we've done, that a a good number of them are online. And also if we're looking at dual enrollment, that a good number of those students are also not on campus or in fact at the high schools. It goes into how we plan for our future facilities, I might add. So the decline is substantial, but then there was another information piece that you had that had to do with the uh. Kind of was a reverse correlation, it looked like we were declining in enrollment, but increasing in certificates and uh. Other completion.
That's correct.
Standards, you, can you account for why that's the case?
Well, it's a good, it's a good trend, we 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 have experienced that enrollment declines over the last several years. Uh, but you've seen the increases in the the number of certificates, associate degrees conferred. Uh, and in the other areas there, well, several several reasons, one is uh we have invested quite a bit. Uh, into understanding uh the student journey, the student pathway and providing supports at appropriate times. So that students don't fall off, stop off or drop off, so a tremendous amount of work through our guided pathways, tremendous amount of work. Uh, from our faculty and in- increasing their ability uh to teach, support uh the educational interests and needs of students. So we want to commend that, so professional development, uh staff support, uh technology that allows us an early alert. Uh, when students are falling off, uh and then just the the increased emphasis on completion. Uh, that's been, I think, a mantra for our community colleges for years now, um and there is an added benefit, particularly now that we are funded. Not just for people who are enrolled, but their completions, uh thirty percent of our funding comes from areas outside of enrollment. So I was.
I was trying to figure out whether there was any kind of uh, since it seems like a reverse correlation, which is kind of bizarre. Uh, there might be some other factors at play here, since I noticed the base period was sixteen seventeen, which is. Our high point and we decline uh each year thereafter, uh but it seems like that uh that. Those statistics just don't seem to uh provide uh. A solid foundation for me as to what we're doing right and wrong. Be horrible when if we were to conclude, the smaller we came, the 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 smaller our institution was in terms of enrollment, the more successful we'd be in. In providing those uh certificates, I find that a little bit too underst- difficult to understand. Anyways, may, you may not have an answer, I don't want to put you on the spot, but uh.
I'll add one more bullet point, excuse me, Mr. Moreno, pardon me, I'll add one more bullet point, I think the state legislation, uh Senate Bill fourteen forty. The associate, the associate degree for transfer also helped uh in providing a clearer pathway for students. Who are principally interested in in attending and transferring to the California State University, that has been a tremendous asset. Law change and and component of why there are more students uh on the transfer pathway to CSU because of. Uh, the ADT bill, so that helped too.
Uh, the one one issue I think I need to, over the many years, we've had similar dual enrollment operations. Throughout the district, is this not a new idea? Uh, I'm just wondering whether you have any statistics that uh. The idea being that if we have dual enrollment, yet we'd be recruiting from those high schools uh to each of our colleges. But my experience has been is that if you're duly enrolled at the high school level and taking college courses. You tend to not move to the community college, but you leave the high school and enter the university system outright. Do you have any information about that?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with that, it's, I I think both things occur, both phenomena occur. That is because dual enrollment could be three, six, nine units, or it could be a full associate's degree, uh we have the high school. Uh, program at L A Harbor, for example, so when that student completes their high school curricula, they have both their high school diploma and. A two-year degree, so I think it varies uh based on the interest of the location, the high school, the the program that they're you're offering. And some indeed use it to bolster their university application and others will continue and enter our colleges uh and complete their. Degrees or move on to transfer thereafter because of the the price or cost comparison, so I'll I'll see if we have something that. Can give a sense of what the trajectory is, but I, both occur, Mr. Moreno.
No, I understand, I've been there a long time, thank you.
Thank you, um, trustee Hoffman.
Thank you, um, President Bola, can you hear me okay? Okay, great, thank you, thank you Chancellor, that was an absolutely excellent report and I just wanna um commend you, number one, so thank. You so much, and I also want to build upon what uh trustee Vera has mentioned about um DEIA, diversity, equity, inclusion and access. You know, there's a real push, as you know, Chancellor, and a commitment amongst um trustees statewide and CEOs. To dig deeper um with with diversity, equity, inclusion and access, not just. In terms of our students and how we serve students, but exactly what we were talking about, how we hire better, smarter, more diverse. Um, in folks that contract with our districts, et cetera. Um, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Armita Ornelas, because, you know, my work statewide. Every, all eyes are on L A C C D, everyone looks to us to see what what's L A doing, is L A growing, how is L A. Uh, addressing dips in enrollment and bringing in a more diverse student body. Um, to that end, Dr. Ornelis was asked to present um at our town hall, there's a series of town halls if anyone's interested. And there were over a hundred CEOs and trustees that participated last week, and she presented on some of the strategies. For her enrollment growth, which was at eight percent at LA Mission College, so congratulations. And I think everyone came away with at least one thing that they can do in their district. Based on her presentation, and I just wanted to publicly thank her, it was really fantastic, and I know you have the the video. Um, of that Chancellor, so thank you for recognizing that as well, but I just wanted to mention that we're doing great things in L A C C D. Under your tremendous leadership, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman.
Yeah, so this is actually, well, if the questions are ending here, and this is actually a question to you, Board President Bola. Um, is it possible to suspend the the um, the orders of the day to to push public comment up to the next agenda item? The possible?
Um, we already approved the agenda.
Okay, so there's, we can't suspend the orders, so make that accommodation.
Um, I'm understanding the requests, is there?
So um, public comment is at the end of this meeting, um, it, but you'd have to go through the entire agenda, obviously we have the consent calendar that's coming after this. But because we have a lot of people in the back who want to present our public comment and it's, I want to at least give them the time to. Not have them wait potentially another half an hour to an hour. Um, is it possible to just get that out of the way and then move on to the rest of the items, so whether we can be considered at their time?
Um, we, yeah, go ahead.
President Bola, I was just going to reiterate the comment that you made, that the agenda was already approved, the time to have um modified. The order of the agenda would have been at that point, um, I would recommend that you proceed with the order uh that was adopted by the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No, that was my question, I just wanted to, no, thank you.
Um, can you take about just thirty seconds?
Yes.
To maybe given an order, what's happening with regard to the issue of, because trustee Hoffman mentioned. In terms of the DEIA, the access component um with regard to um language. And and what some of the activities that are occurring, next week we're gonna be presenting, there's some presentations that are coming, but what's happening with regard to the issue of. Language and how we teach at L A C C D?
Well, principally with the impetus of the Ad- Board's Ad-Hoc Committee on Serving Monolingual Communities. Uh, we uh sought a legal opinion as to whether or not we could. Teach courses both credit and non-credit in languages other than English, and the answer is yes. And so this winter session, the colleges with the wonderful leadership of of the presidents and their instructional teams. Are piloting a series of courses to, in multiple languages and multiple disciplines, to see what might serve the interests. Of our community here in building skills, building capacity, uh some are workforce, some aren't on credit uh and whatnot, so we're going to be piloting that. Uh, effort uh um based on what we we believe the needs of the students are, we had a survey. That was conducted at the September meeting, Dr. Albo Locas presented the results of a survey that suggested. That uh there is interest in serving a a monolingual student population, so we're gonna try it out. And uh next month, as you're very aware, at the statewide conference, we're going to give some ideas to others who may be exploring the same venture.
Thank you, and and I mentioned that only because the the, sometimes the concepts of of what diversity, access, inclusion. Diversity equity mean um evolves, shifts and new items, you know, uh kind of emerge. Um, you know, so it's an ever emerging uh discussion, um, but again, I want to thank you, uh Chancellor, for the presentation. For the documentation, uh make yourself available for this process, um, I'm not, we went through everyone. Um, I'm just gonna do a very two-second, is there any additional comment or question? If not, we're we're gonna move on.
Okay, and I just have two quick things, if there's no other question, go ahead, please, first your your, please.
Oh, is there anything else from anyone else, so the Chancellor can conclude? Okay.
I just wanted to 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 thank, uh, you know, the remote work uh program is significant, and it took several, several weeks. Of uh weeks of lots of good work, and I wanted to thank Dr. Nish and and Ms. Zingshine for their leadership, along with the Rick. Or you're Rick somewhere, uh, thank you for for your excellent work there, this is a significant, forward-looking uh proposal. I think we might be first uh to get this far along, so I just wanted to recognize of them. Uh, for their outstanding work in getting us to this position today, again, thank you very much for your kind attention.
Thank you very much, um, we're not gonna move to.
President Bola.
Yes, trust.
Really quick, um, Chancellor, we we do have um with us a interim. Um, Director of Public Relations that replaced William, would you like to um acknowledge?
Oh, yes, of course.
That would be fantastic.
Doing outstanding work, uh, uh, is Julie Juliet Hidalgo, uh, go ahead, take a bow Juliet, she's been outstanding. Uh, stand up, please, let us recognize you, he's done. Outstanding work uh as the provisional or interim uh director of communications for the district, and she has just stepped. Uh, right in, so thank you for the opportunity to recognize her, and we appreciate her talent, her professionalism and her can-do and infectious spirit. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, um, we're now gonna move to item uh H, combined consent calendar matters uh require majority of board. Board members, we now have uh uh items I one through U three. These items include consent items for human resources, personnel commission, academic fair, student services, budget, finance, business and facilities. Are there any items from I one through U three? If you're on, if you're on um trustee Hoffman, trustee um uh Moreno, if you want, have a question or you want to pull. It it is difficult to see you from the screen, so if you could just acknowledge verbally. Um, if there's anything that you would either have a question or 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 separate, so I'm just going to ask right now. Uh, very quickly, uh trustee Vedas, anything, uh trustee Eno? Good trustee? See Vella?
No.
Anything online?
Uh, K three.
A three, uh, do you have a question or do you want to pull that for a separate vote?
No, I don't want to pull it for separate vote, I just want to make a comment when we get to it.
Okay, well, well, then let let me go ahead and 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 get a a motion, may have a motion in a second to adopt all remaining items. Um, of the consent calendar, I one through U three.
Actually, I'm sorry, um, I did have a question, I sent the Chancellor, did you get a chance to respond to that? There was uh.
But let let me get through the motion, then we'll get to the question.
There was, it was, it's one item on the consent, I just sent him, I sent him an email earlier, I was looking for it right now.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion, uh trustee Hoffman, second? Is there a second? Second trustee Eno, now we're gonna go to trustee Hoffman's uh uh comment, then trustee Vedas' question, trustee.
Thank you, President Bola, you know, we oftentimes go straight through the consent calendar without really taking a moment to look and reflect on. Um, some of the things that are within the consent calendar, specifically, there's a new course being proposed. Um, it under K three, and that course is under the Rad Tech program at L A City College. Um, and it's a mammography certification, and I just want to make the comment that. Living in L A my entire life and having, you know, opportunities, I'm gonna say opportunities. And commitments for X-rays, I have kids who had broken bones and, you know, I go every year to get all the X-rays that I need to get. And yes, I do get my mammogram every single time, and I'm not exaggerating, the person doing. every single time, and I'm not exaggerating. The person doing the x-ray, the x-ray tech, is usually a student who graduated from our program, mostly at LA City College. And I just wanted to point that out and not take for granted the fact that our courses, our programs, our certificates, whether they're credit or non-credit, and we've got new credit courses, new non-credit courses, and full programs on the agenda today. And those lead to real jobs, good-paying jobs, where our students have had long-time careers. And not to get too personal, and this might be TMI, but it's also a good reminder, ladies, go get your mammogram every year. The last time I went, there was a mammographer who 25 years ago went through our program, and she superb at her job, making a good living, and has nothing but incredible things to say about Los Angeles City College. So I just wanted to point that out, because oftentimes we go through this agenda, and, you know, I think trustee Veras put it, you know, kind of bluntly, like, you know, it's not that exciting. But for me, as a trustee, as a board member, this is exciting, and I just want to acknowledge all the good work that we do and how we change students' lives by the programs that we offer. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hoffman. And I, I think the reaction from here from the dais is that we all agree with you and understand the importance of mammograms and, and supporting this project for everyone in our, in our lives. So thank you for that comment. Trustee Vedas?
No, the Chancellor got my question already.
Okay. Any additional comments? Okay, seeing none. Roll call.
Student trustee Callahan advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bala?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item V, items V1 through V14. Board members, are there any items from item V1 or V14? Let me just say separately that you want to pull comments. We can wait until we do the, the, the motion that anyone would like a separate vote on. Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion on items V1 through V14?
So moved.
A move by trustee Vella, second? Second by trustee Henderson. Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Student trustee advisory vote? Absent. Trustee Bala?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno? Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes. Thank you very much. We're now moving on to item W, facilities, items W1 through W7. Are there any items that any individual board member would like to pull for a separate vote, leaving comments for once the motion is passed? Anyone on, any virtual trustees? Seeing none, trustee Henderson? Vella?
No.
Vedas? May I have a motion on item W1 through W7? Move by trustee Henderson, second by?
Second.
Trustee Vella. Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Student trustee Callahan advisory vote? Absent. Trustee Bala?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
We can, trusty.
Yeah.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
So trustees, I'm, I'm now going to read to you for a minute or so. Before we propose, we proceed to vote on the next action item in regard to employment action for college president, presidents, and district executives. I will read the following language for the record. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953(c-3, which is part of the Brown Act, we are required to make an oral summary of proposed action on the salary, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for all executive-level positions as defined in subdivision D of the Government Code 3511.1 during the open meeting in which the final action is to be taken. In our case, we need to provide such summary for positions such as the Chancellor, Vice Chancellors, and the College Presidents. Agenda for item now before us includes an employment action for interim president of Los Angeles Pierce College, Ms. Araceli Aguiar, from November 1, 2022 to March 31, 2023, with salary placement at step 2, $19,106.32 per month of the Vice Chancellor, of the Vice Chancellor and College President's salary schedule. Ms. Aguiar will receive a $500 per month car allowance, and she would be entitled to the same health and welfare benefits as received by other unrepresented administrators, including retiree health benefits. Now, I have a motion and a second on item X1.
I move to approve. Oh, sorry.
By trustee Eno, seconded by trustee Hoffman. Are there any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bala?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes. Now, we'll go through some interesting loops of our rules. Prior to the vote on Y1, Board Policy 2410 allows any section of the board policies to be suspended by a vote of at least four members of the board. May I have a motion to suspend Board Policy 2410, which requires notice of proposed amendments in a prior meeting before an action is taken to adopt an amendment to our board policy? May I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
A move by trustee Vella, second by?
Eno.
Second by trustee Henderson. Any comment?
Yes.
Yeah, can you explain, please? I'm a little confused.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to explain this. Thank you. Board Policy 2410 allows the board to take upon its board policy action. It allows you to do it in a single, single item. Typically, we do it over a couple. That is, first reading, then second reading. This allows that one of the readings to be suspended so that we could move to immediate action. This is related to the telecommuting policy that you supported back in July. We simply want to rename it to the Remote Work Program. Remote Work. That's the only change I have communicated with the board, the documents associated with the Remote Work Program. So that is the only name change. Everything else, content-wise, remains the same. But this action allows you to do it in one fell swoop, since we'd like to roll out this program next month.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bala?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes. Okay. Now, may I have a motion and a second to authorize revision of Board Policy 7280? Motion? Trustee?
So moved.
Eno, seconded by trustee?
Second.
Vella? Any comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bala?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes. Trustee Henderson, in your absence, since we're doing these heavy lifting reports here, could you give us a, a, a quick verbal report on the, on the Agenda and Diversity Committee? Please.
It was last month.
Our General Counsel, Ameril Miquita, trustee Hoffman, and, you know, myself. Goals for how we forward regarding doing higher cost around diversity and equity are interested in policy and, and, and. Thank you, trustee Henderson. We did, we did announce to, to the public that we were going to hold off on, on the report until you came. We, we had to keep our word to the public. Back to, back to the agenda as stated. Approval of policy, of Board, of Board Policies, Chapter 3. May I have a motion and a second on item Y2 by trustee?
Eno.
Eno. Is there a second by trustee? Second. Henderson, thank you very much. Is there any comment? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bala?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes. Okay. Next is appointment of members to the Oversight Committee. May I have a motion and a second on item Y3? By trustee?
Eno.
Eno. Is there a second by trustee? So moved. Henderson? Any com, and, thank you. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bala?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes. May I have a motion and a second on item Y4? Motion by trustee?
Eno.
Eno, seconded by trustee? Henderson. Henderson. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bala?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes. Moving on to item Z, Notice Reports and Informatives. Board members, there is one notice. No action is required at this time. Chancellor?
Although, nothing to report.
Nothing to report?
Nothing. Excuse me, pardon me. I just, there is one notice that is required. Excuse me so much. I was cut off. I, my pedal's still here for a minute. It's a notice of approval for Board Policies, Chapter 7. So this is 7131, Replacement and Repair of Employees' Personal Property. This is the first reading, so we simply put it out to the board, to the public, or it's for you?
Okay.
Yes, okay, thank you. And we'll, what did I do?
Okay. Quality control over there. You're good.
No action needed. Excuse me.
Thank you. All right, next, next announcements and indications of future proposed action by members of the Board of Trustees. Are there any announcements, indications about future proposed items by board member? Trustee Moreno and Hoffman, anything?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Anyone here on the dais? Okay, Judge, oh.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bala. Just to note that for next week's regularly scheduled board committee meetings, I wanted to note for, to the members of the board and to the public that the Legislative and Public Affairs Committee will not occur, will be canceled, postponed until the, the November visit. So we will begin with the Budget and Finance Committee at 2:30 PM.
Chancellor, can we maybe move that up to, to 2 o'clock then, so that we can start a little bit earlier in case, in case there are a lot of questions? Would that be a possibility?
There is. There are still some time, given the 72-hour notice. So the chair as well, we will do that.
Okay, yeah, I'm with you. And I will talk to Ms. Gordon, but I don't, I don't know if there are anything, any other things on the agenda. So if we can move Budget and Finance up to 2, that might be helpful to give us time. Thank you. It'll give us like an extra half hour.
So are there any persons signed up to address the board on matters not on the agenda? So I have, I'm going to call first call, call up, we'll call, we have Chris Kofer, Grace Chi, Angel Beldon, and Rudy Asadas. So either, either in person here at the ESC or online, I'm calling Chris Kofer. Chris?
I'm here, President Bala.
And you have, just so everyone knows, you have three minutes. Crystal, are you, are you taking time? Okay, thumbs up there by Crystal. Mr. Kofer, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Bala, trustees, Chancellor Rodriguez, and guests. My name is Chris Kofer. I teach Political Sciences and Adjunct at LA City and LA Mission Colleges. I'm an AFT 1521 member and serve on the E-Board. I request your support of ongoing expenditures for adjunct faculty healthcare and negotiations to increase access and reduce costs for employees. Working with other local and state leaders, this is now more possible with the additional $200 million in ongoing funding from the state. We, and I largely started addressing this with trustee interviews several years ago. And I, more recently, I've been working with community college colleagues from San Mateo, Los Rios, Cabrillo, and other districts. Our efforts have included monthly statewide meetings and a dedicated lobbying day in Sacramento. Following this effective lobbying and advocacy, we now move towards local districts and collective bargaining. What we do in Los Angeles matters greatly to all of us and also to the rest of the state. And I know we can be outstanding leaders in this area. We've made substantial progress. I acknowledge and thank everyone who has been supportive of this effort. Being one of the adjuncts who has payroll deductions to cover some of the expense for health insurance, I appreciate the gradual reductions in direct costs to me that have occurred. I look forward to seeing the full premium covered on an ongoing basis, and for many of our coworkers and colleagues to have access to health insurance for themselves and their dependents. Thank you very much for your ongoing support for employee healthcare and negotiations to increase access and reduce costs for employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Grace Chi?
She's not responding to the panelist invite. I've allowed her to speak, but I'm not sure if she's available.
I, I heard she would not be able to attend.
Thank you for letting us know. Greatly appreciated. Angel Beldon?
Greetings, Chancellor and trustees. My name is Angel Beldon, and I'm the Pierce College Chapter Chair. As a full-time faculty member, having the benefit of excellent healthcare for me and my family allows me to show up for my students and this community every day. Research indicates that employees with access to healthcare are more likely to seek preventative care and address health issues, which directly impacts our students in the classroom. Healthy professors show up for their students. In other words, faculty wellness is student success. When we invest in our adjunct faculty colleagues who teach many classes in our community college, we help to ensure quality student-centered learning. Our adjunct faculty were among the first to come back during the pandemic, and many of them did so without healthcare. Healthcare is a human right. It's our responsibility to care for one another, and it's the right thing to do. Equity for adjunct faculty from a full-time perspective is also the right thing to do. I'd like to ask the Board of Trustees to support access to quality, affordable, and ongoing healthcare for our adjunct faculty. A healthy workforce is supporting student success. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Rudy Asadas?
Thank you. Good afternoon, trustees. I'm here to speak on the historic victory of obtaining $200 million for healthcare for adjuncts. And I want to humbly request that the trustees make healthcare for adjuncts a board goal to provide adjuncts with healthcare as soon as possible. My duty as a father is to provide and protect for my children. I am diabetic. My children suffer from asthma. And under the current policies, I cannot provide. And under the current policies, I cannot provide for them the healthcare that is so important to their future. I'm also diabetic, as I've mentioned. Without healthcare, it costs me a whole bunch to be able to ascertain the medications that I need to stay, to keep a healthy lifestyle, to do what I need to do in class to provide education fundamentals for my students. Without healthcare, I can, it's either going to take away from my ability to provide or affect my ability to protect. I think it's time for adjuncts to have the healthcare that we so deserve for serving our community and serving our students in the district. Please, I want to urge you, before I go, make it a board goal. Let's act on it, and let's do this now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casades. Next group of speakers, Dirk Griffin, Newton Kellum, Lonnie Davis, and Dario Fromer. If you could state your name and the item, and then the three-minute clock.
Good afternoon, President Buena. I'm Newton Kellum. I, if you want to start three-minute clock, it's about a litigated item. Are we ready? So I'm a chief admin officer from Penner Construction Company. We're a one-hundred-and-five-year-old public works contractor. We build schools in Los Angeles. We're building the Performing Arts Center at L.A. Valley College. It was originally seventy-million-dollar project, seventy-six-million-dollar project. It's been delayed over four years. And it's over budget, almost forty million dollars. We bill two hundred million dollars for the schools in L.A. every year. This doesn't happen on our projects. The needless waste of taxpayer dollars needs to stop. To date, Penner has been forced to sue L.A. CCD over this project three times. The first time was TIA's one through five. And if you recall, your consultants, Mark Strauss and Kevin Terrell, told you that Penner's claims were invalid. Based on those representations, L.A. CCD paid lawyers and consultants to go through this horrible pre-mediation process. We exchanged thousands of pages of documents, attend two mandatory meetings, all for nothing. L.A. CCD made no offer. It was only after waiting six months and spending a million dollars that a mediator convinced you folks that Penner's claims were valid, that the project was delayed by the consultants, not Penner. Faced with this truth, L.A. CCD paid Penner five million dollars in December twenty twenty. Penner's second claim on the project involved TIA six and seven. In response to that claim, the consultants doubled down. They were so convincing that you folks decided to make us go all the way to binding arbitration for six weeks, costing the taxpayers two and a half million dollars in expert and attorney's fees that were completely wasted. In her war, Judge Bellotti was not kind. She held that it was the consultants and not Penner who delayed the project during the TIA six and seven time period, costing the taxpayers three point two additional million dollars because the consultants had not administered the contract in good faith. Now, you're asking yourselves, why have we sued you personally as board members? Well, the answer is simple. It's because you're letting it happen again. Penner has filed twenty-six million dollars in final claims for the project that we allege were caused by the consultants. The consultants, for a third time, are denying Penner's claim and refusing to mediate without wasting six more months and exchanging documents and costing a million dollars to complete the pre-mediation process. Please put an end to the insanity. These consultants have misled you twice.
This is a three-minute timer.
Suspend these consultants and mediate now.
Thank you.
The taxpayers deserve a break.
Next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lonnie Davis, and it's very interesting and somewhat sad that your student trustee, who approached me outside to ask me to tell him about a decision by Judge Deborah Bellotti. I was intending to ask each one of you, do you even know that name? Do you know the decision? It was a decision decided, with all due respect, President Buena. You said anyone can file a lawsuit to the Los Angeles case. What you didn't say is a former, very highly respected judge found after an extensive trial that the consultants at this board is supposed to supervise were found to have violated good-faith standards. Not one of you has mentioned that decision. And then, when your student trustee asked for us to be put ahead in the agenda so that he could hear us speak, your general counsel or acting general counsel objected, and your chancellor very eloquently said, this board should be about transparency and accountability. With all due respect, please do one thing. Read what a very honorable and highly respected judge found. She did not need to find a violation of good faith by your consultants. Your board president did not mention that to the Los Angeles Times. You said, we back our staff, anyone can file a lawsuit. What you did not say is that Judge Bellotti found, as a matter of fact, a violation of good-faith standards, and taxpayer dollars have been spent. With all respect, I ask you to please read what she found and then look at the consultants she was talking about as acting in bad faith and give your student trustee a chance next time to have us speak before he has to leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Either Dirk Griffin or Dario Fromer? Okay, thank you. Is Dario Fromer here? No? Okay, thank you. Are there any other agenda persons on non-agenda items? Lupe, Crystal?
Those are the only speakers that officially signed up.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to, are there any items or speakers signed up for items on closed agenda items?
No, no one signed up.
Okay. The board will then recess to close session in accordance with the Ralph and Brown Act, Government Code Section five four nine five oh at SecuDor and the Education Code to discuss the matters on the post it closes.
President Buena, thank you for, BB two?
BB two. No, closed-section item.
I have requests. Sorry. Where is the section for the board to announce future events?
Oh, back here. Is there something? We announced it. You may walk away.
Oh, I apologize.
Is there anything you'd like to?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Hold on, hold on. Let me, let me go back to, I'm starting this sentence again. The board will recess to close session according to with the Ralph and Brown Act, Government Code Section five four nine five oh at SecuDor and the Education Code to discuss the matters on the post it close session agenda pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four dot five. May I have a motion to recess to close session?
So moved.
Any objections? None noted. General counsel, do I need to take roll call, or is that fine?
No, no need for roll.
Okay, thank you. All right, without objection, thank you.
Sole order, thank you.